That's all right, I just wanted to make sure, because we have four, but I just didn't want you to have an accident or something.
Uh, Dr. Menker?
Yes.
Did you put this one?
Okay.
Hi.
Motion passes to allow Counselor Pelham to join remotely.
Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move we go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss appointments to various boards and commissions, and to discuss the city manager search and interim, city attorney and city clerk.
Roll call.
Who was the second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Ms. Holloway.
Okay, I didn't hear it, sorry. Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
I must have missed, heard, so, I thought, did you say interim city attorney?
City manager search and interim.
Interim, I thought you said city attorney, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, yes.
Then, okay, yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes to go into closed.
All right.
I need another link, Mr. Parton.
I'm just gonna keep you on the phone.
That'd be great.
Looks like somebody ties one of those. I haven't seen her in a while, so I don't even know if it's her. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think this is yours, but I don't mind. I don't want it.
I need to.
You stop that chair.
Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second. Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton? Counselor Denton? Counselor Palam?
She's supposed to be calling back in.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion to come out of both passes six to zero. Certification pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23712D where only public business matters, one, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two, identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Palam?
She's supposed to be calling back in.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion to come out of both passes six to zero. Certification passes six to zero.
I move that we appoint Mr. Carlos Ramon to the Planning Commission and then also myself to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Board.
Can you restate the motion?
The motion is to appoint Mr. Carlos Ramon to the Planning Commission and then also myself to the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
And the Creator Planning Division.
I'm sorry, yeah, and Creator, yeah, Creator Planning Executive.
Second. Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counsel? Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. For Mr. Ward?
Hey.
We have a work session this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have for your work session, a conditional use permit application. It was submitted by applicant who is the owner of the property, Ms. Kimberly Tally. The property is known as sub parcel number 028-0020. It is located between 202 and 206 Crescent Avenue. It's a vacant lot. We also, I'm going to refer to it as 204 Crescent Avenue through the presentation. 204 Crescent Avenue is a non-conforming lot in the R1 zoning district located more than three. The lot itself is five feet shorter than the required lot width for the R1. R1 requires lots to be 80 feet wide. This particular lot is 75 feet wide. The R1 also requires that a minimum lot size be 12,000 square feet. This particular lot is 8,880 feet, which is 3,150 square feet short of the 12,000 minimum. On this particular slide, I'll just note that the neighboring parcel located at 202 Crescent Avenue is the same-sized parcel, but that house was constructed in the 1930s. During the planning, when Planning Commission reviewed this application, there was some question as to the topography of this particular lot and some particular issues with steep slopes and/or storm drainage. At the request of Planning Commission, Stephen Edwards, who is the city's stormwater program manager, did make a site visit. He and I both visited the property together. He provided his assessment in a written memo, which should have been included in your council packet for your review. Essentially, Mr. Edwards stated that there is a ravine in the northwest corner of this parcel and that any construction on this site would likely require some sort of armoring of the ravine to stabilize it. Rashad, I'm sorry, but it's showing correct on my computer. I'm sorry, it looks like we've got some technical issues here.
I can show it from that if I need to.
We're almost there. Two loops. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to construct a one-story, 1,290 square foot home on this particular lot. The ordinance requires that any new construction on this lot meet all the setbacks required for the R1. Of course, the applicant has agreed to do that. Some additional information about the house is that it'll be a three-bedroom, two-fold bath, it'll have a crawl space, and a brick-and-block foundation, vinyl siding, salt-treated front porch and back deck, architectural shingles, foundation flower bed with plantings, and concrete sidewall to a driveway. As part of the conditional use permit review process, staff likes to take a look at the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. One of the considerations when reviewing a conditional use permit for a new single-family construction would be, is the proposed structure going to fit within the neighborhood? So, the next few slides are just going to show you an inventory of the properties along that block of Crescent Avenue. That should also have been included in your packet. I would note, in particular, on this screen here, the 202 Crescent is the same-sized parcel that's next door to the 204 Crescent, which you're considering tonight, and the 203, the property located at 203 Crescent Avenue across the street is a somewhat similar design to the proposed design. Continuing down the block, you can see that there's a one-story property, which is the smallest property.[1373.13]
myself to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Board.
Can you restate the motion?
The motion is to appoint Mr. Carlos Ramon to the Planning Commission and then also myself to the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
And the Creator Planning.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, and Creator, yeah, and Creator Planning Executive.
Second. Councilor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Couse-
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Council Randolph?
Yes.
Council Holloway? Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. For Mr. Ward?
Hey. We have a work session this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight we have for your work session a conditional use permit application. It was submitted by applicant who is the owner of the property, Ms. Kimberly Tally. The property is known as sub parcel number 028-0020. It is located between 202 and 206 Crescent Avenue. It's a vacant lot. We also, I'm going to refer to it as 204 Crescent Avenue through the presentation. 204 Crescent Avenue is a non-conforming lot in the R1 zoning district located more three. The lot itself is five feet shorter than the required lot width for the R1. R1 requires lots to be 80 feet wide. This particular lot is 75 feet wide. The R1 also requires that a minimum lot size be 12,000 square feet. This particular lot is 8,880 feet, which is 3,150 square feet short of the 12,000 minimum. On this particular slide, I'll just note that the neighboring parcel located at 202 Crescent Avenue is a, is the same sized parcel, but that house was constructed in the 1930s. During the planning, when Planning Commission reviewed this application, there was some question as to the topography of this particular lot and some particular issues with steep slopes and/or storm drainage. At the request of Planning Commission, Stephen Edwards, who is the city's Stormwater Program Manager, did make a site visit. He and I both visited the property together. He provided his assessment in a written memo, which should have been included in your council packet for your review. Essentially, Mr. Edwards stated that there is a ravine in the northwest corner of this parcel and that any construction on this site would likely require some sort of armoring of the ravine to stabilize it. Rashad, I'm sorry, but it's showing correct on my computer. I'm sorry, it looks like we've got some technical issues here. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to construct a one-story, 1,290 square foot home on this particular lot. The ordinance requires that any, any new construction on this lot need all the setbacks required for the R1. Of course, the applicant has agreed to do that. Some additional information about the house is that it'll be a three-bedroom, two-fold bath, it'll have a crawl space and a brick and block foundation, vinyl siding, salt-treated front porch and back deck, architectural shingles, foundation flower bed with plantings and concrete sidewall to a driveway. As part of the conditional use permit review process, staff likes to take a look at the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. One of the considerations when reviewing a conditional use permit for a new single-family construction would be, is the, is the proposed structure going to fit within the neighborhood? So, the next few slides are just going to show you an inventory of the properties along that block of Crescent Avenue. That should also have been included in your packet. I would note, in particular, on this, this screen here, the 202 Crescent is the same-sized parcel that's next door to the 204 Crescent, which you're considering tonight, and the 203, the property located at 203 Crescent Avenue across the street is a somewhat similar design to the proposed design. Continuing down the block, you can see that there's a one-story property, which is the smallest property on the block, located at 206 Crescent, and then a one-story at 209. In summary, on average, the houses on that block are 1.4 stories, 1,838 square feet, 3.6 bedrooms, two-fold bath and one-half bath. The proposed property is a one-story property at 1,350 square feet with three bedrooms and two baths. Anytime you are considering a conditional use permit, we have to consider the following seven items. Will the proposed conditional use be in compliance with all regulations of the applicable zoning district? Will the proposed conditional use endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare? Will the proposed conditional use be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity? Will the proposed conditional use conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it's located? Will the exterior architectural appeal and functional plan of any proposed structure be at variance with the exterior architectural appeal and functional plan of the structures already constructed in the immediate neighborhood? Does the public interest and welfare supporting the proposed conditional use sufficiently outweigh the individual interests which are adversely affected by the establishment of the proposed use? And finally, will the proposed use result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any feature determined to be of significant ecological, scenic, or historic importance? The Planning Commission reviewed this application at a public hearing. They tabled it at that time, and then at a regular, at their following regular meeting, they voted two to one to approve the application with the following conditions applied to the application. Number one, adding at least one more window to each bedroom and bathroom. Condition number two would be adding a red brick veneer to cover at least both front gable ends. Number three, adding a concrete or paved asphalt driveway. And condition number four would be adding armoring to the steep slopes on the property per the requirement set forth by the city's Stormwater Program Manager. The applicant herself is here tonight to answer any questions. So is Mr. Edwards from Stormwater. If you have any questions related to that, of course, I can answer any questions you may have as well. Thank you.
Council Randolph?
Thank you. Yes, sir. You and I talked, and I agree with what the Planning Commission has requested, but for my benefit, because I'm not sure whether you or Mr. Edwards can help us understand, what is armoring and how much the added cost to the potential homeowner is that going to be? And so, somebody could explain that, because then I have a couple of other quick questions.
Yes, ma'am. Armoring is where they will take and create the slopes back and then apply something like Class 1 riprap fabric and riprap or block.
Okay.
And that's what armoring is, because right now the slopes are not, when they build this house, they're going to impact the vegetation that's already stabilized in those slopes. There is one more thing that we noticed as well on this, and I want to bring this up as well. There is actually an inlet. We did not see it when we were out there because it's buried. There is an inlet on the northern property line on this site as well, so they'll have to kind of clean that inlet up around there when they do their armoring and protect it around that inlet as well.
Explain inlet to us a little bit more.
An inlet is a great inlet or storm drain.
Okay.
That allows, because that whole area slopes to that back corner.
Okay.
So there is that, and they also have to just be aware too of a proposed eight-inch sanitary, oh, excuse me, an existing eight-inch sanitary sewer line that runs along that back property line as well. There is an easement back there as well. So those are two things that were discovered later. But the biggest thing is just that they'll have to support that slope with some sort of material to keep it from eroding away when they build this house.
Okay. And that's their responsibility to install that? How much does that usually add to the property cost to know?
It's based off a tonnage through, they'll have to get it from a rock quarry.
Okay.
So I'm not really sure where the tunger's going right now with the way prices have changed.
Okay. All right, great. And do we know, Mr. Ward, whether this property's going to be homeownership or are they building to sell?
My understanding is that the applicant has, has a builder lined up to build this house, who would construct the house for sale.
Okay. And so the only other comment that I'll make is that I'm very familiar with this. I rode by it again, and while the averages that you gave us were very helpful, I think that the 206 Crescent at 937 square footage really throws the numbers off.
It does. It's an outlier.
Yeah. And that was built in 1952, and there's not much we can do about it. The most recent build on that street is almost 1,500 square foot. So I'm in favor of, if this build could be done at one and a half to add more square footage, because I'm of the opinion that we are in an area that really, to fit it into the neighborhood, 1,290 is pretty low, and to build a little bit more square footage, to me, fits in that, because if you take out the oddball and average the other six houses together and then divide by six, you come up with 1,988 square footage, which is quite a bit different, and we're not recommending that big, but to get it out of the 1,290, I would feel more comfortable just because we need those larger houses to start bringing in and keep the community, the street consistent. And I know that's what you all are trying to do.
Absolutely.
So that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes. Same sentiments that Council Randolph has with this. I mean, yes, you took an inventory of Crescent Avenue, and that's one of four, you know, streets in the Crescent Hills neighborhood itself. And I'm sure if you, you know, went further in and looked at some of the houses over on Prince George Ave, especially Oakwood Avenue, having the biggest ones, especially, you know, Dr. Butler's, you know, recent additions and renovations to, you know, his house. And then also looking at the houses over on Fairview Avenue. I think this house would fit a lot better in if it was, you know, a two-story house and if it was closer to the mark of about 2,000 square feet. I'd even, you know, offer to, you see if they would be amenable to adding a half bath in there, if this is going to be, you know, to sell the house. Those would be, you know, some of my recommendations, because I think it would be much more fitting in there, especially, you know, with the majority of the houses over on Crescent Avenue being, you know, a little bit more sizable than what's being proposed. And especially when you want to add, you know, to a neighborhood, you add more value and have something that's, you know, more becoming and fitting. And then, you know, the other things I would like to see especially, and I know, Mr. Edwards, you know, we've talked on the, the Stormwater issue, and, you know, I did speak at that public hearing, because that's, you know, that's my biggest concern more than anything else, is that that whole block goes into, you know, one big ravine. And you have, you know, currently as it stands right now, massive flooding that goes on when we have big rainstorms. And when we're talking about, you know, building a house right there, when we had these huge trees that are actually, one, holding up the bank for that piece of property, but are also doing a big proponent of our big amount of actually absorbing the water, so that way it's less in there and causing damage to other people's property. And I want to make sure that we're taking that into account too, you know, not only, you know, adding value to the neighborhood, but also making sure that we're protecting, you know, the current, you know, tenants and citizens that are living in that, you know, especially that block. And so, I don't know if it's feasible or not for the applicant, but I'd, you know, like to look at, you know, maybe some expansive tree canopies for that lot, you know, maybe something northward of 20% I think would be, you know, really good and end up helping with the stabilization and water absorption. And then, you know, just like I recommend for, you know, any house that comes before, especially on a, you know, conditional use permit, I'd like to see overhang, you know, around the entire house, because it keeps the water away from the foundation and preserves the foundation and provides you a better quality house in the long run.
Do you have a particular size of overhang?
Just what I normally always ask for, you know, somewhere between, you know, eight and 12 inches.
Would you include gutters with that as well?
Yes. And then, you know, preferably, you know, if the gutters in the front of the house, if you could, you know, have a drain that ends up going out to the street, so that way it's not flooding the ravine, you know, reducing the Stormwater impact down there.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilor Denton and then Councilor Gore?
Yes, Mr. Ward.
Yes, ma'am.
Along with what Councilor Randolph and Vice Mayor Parton said, I too would like to see the square footage at least 1,500. The house across the street, which was built just a few years ago for today's market, that is 1,496 square feet. So, in today's market, I think 1,500 would be fair. Could I, I know there is concern, I, I know that area pretty well. I used to take music lessons right in there, so that was a long time ago, but, and I know they have that ravine that runs down behind it, especially the house right there on the corner of Crescent Avenue and West Broadway. Could I ask Mr. Anderson, I see him sitting here in our audience, I think he would know, because somewhere in there, there is an underground spring or something, do we have a problem with drainage? The houses seem to be pretty stable in that area, but can you add anything to that?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I don't know of any spring issues in the ravine there.
Okay.
And the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer that, that Mr. Edwards referenced, it's the rear of the property, is much lower than where the home is going to be built. The home is up closer, on a higher elevation, closer, you know, closer to the road elevation of Crescent Avenue, and the, the ravine is a, is a drop-off, and that's where Mr. Edwards was talking about doing the armoring with the riprap, which is the large rocks that help protect slopes. So if you can imagine a home sitting up kind of closer to grade with the road, and then the drop-off would be behind the rear of the home, and the city storm and sanitary sewers are underground existing behind there. And in order to, and frankly, it could improve the situation back there if you can tie in the existing drop-inlet to this ravine, slope ravine that you would armor. You could potentially improve the situation back there than it is today.
So you don't see any potential problem with building this house on that location?
I, I do not, as long as you follow the guidance that was set forth with Mr. Edwards in Stormwater.
Yes.
I don't see an issue with building a home there. And in fact, this, this inlet that we're talking about, which is a great inlet, it, it constantly gets covered up with sediment and debris, and it's a constant maintenance issue where worked in with the armoring plan that the applicant's going to work with Mr. Edwards and the city on, you could potentially improve that situation and clean it up a little bit than today's, than, than the current situation today.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your input. The other thing I'd like to say, Mr. Ward, I would like, I, I think the Planning Commission, you all suggested the two brick gables on the front.
Correct.
Adding that, that would really enhance that street. I think, I think the suggestions that you have made are very good ones, adding the windows. I think, all in all, I think it's, it would be a good project for our city, so I'm very excited about that one. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gore?
I just want to verify what's going on right now. I know council members shared some of their feelings, some I agree with, some I don't agree with, but this is conditional use permit was approved by the Planning Commission, correct?
Two to one, yes, ma'am.
And they didn't offer any proffers, right?
No proffers, but the Planning Commission did set the conditions.
Uh huh.
They agreed with the conditions that I had put in the staff report.
And some of the items that we're hearing tonight are in addition to what you have in the staff report, correct?
Some of the comments made by your fellow councilors would, would be in addition to, I'm assuming would be in addition to what the Planning Commission recommends.
Okay. So technically, with procedure, we will have to, if people disagree with the conditions, they need to deny it, because council can't conduct proffers. That goes to the Planning Commission. So I just want to make sure we don't err in crossing our statutory authority.
Sure.
I'm just making sure I'm correct, so I don't want people to get the impression they're telling you to go back, research, when we technically can't add a proffer to your list. And that's what we've been told before to shy out, to not do. This is what, yeah, so the proper thing if people don't agree, just for clarification, is to deny this. And Council Randolph, okay, make sure we're tracking.
Yeah, okay. I'm with you.
Make sure no one makes a motion to tell you to go back and do, because you can't legally do that.
Correct.
Okay.
So I, and she took my comment. I did. The recommendations, were they accepted by the builders?
Yes, the applicant, yes.
The recommendations, okay.
She checked the conditions set by the Planning Commission, and she agreed, she has agreed to those conditions.
Okay. And my second thing is, you know, we have an expectation on council, what we want are, what we want in our city, right?
Sure.
And of course, I do agree that it should be more square footage. We don't want this a step-up home for someone just to start and then move on. We want long-term, yeah? But with that being said, it's really important that council come together and create a vision and meet with the Planning Commission and meet with staff. That way they know exactly what we want, so we're not here having this conversation after it's been decided. So if we give, you know, I would really encourage council to think about those things. Maybe we can have a meeting, you know, joint meeting, and we can come up with a vision on how we want these houses to look, because we can't change things once they get here. And it's not fair that we, you know, we let you guys go out here and make these decisions, and when you come here and say that's not exactly what we wanted. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions, comments?
And the applicant is here this evening if you had questions for her in particular.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for a regular meeting. Welcome our visitors and roll call, please. Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Here.
Council Randolph?
Here.
Council Holloway?
Here.
Councilor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Here.
Councilor Palam? Six present. Thank you. Can you just let us know when Council Palam chimes in?
She was on.
Okay.
This time we'll have the prayer by Vice Mayor Parton.
Yeah, got promoted, Reverend Vice.
I made you a reverend today.
Everyone, please stand. Please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, and we thank you for bringing everybody here safely and soundly to do the city's business and the business of the people for the city of Hopewell. Lord, we pray that you will be with us.
Lord, we pray that you will be with us and oversee and guide us and help install upon us good wisdom, so that way we are making the best decisions for the city of Hopewell and for its citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to amend or adopt the regular meeting agenda?
I move that we adopt the regular meeting agenda.
Second.
Roll call. Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Palam? Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes to adopt the regular meeting agenda.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Gore?
No.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Palam, are you on? Okay, motion passes to adopt the consent agenda, five to one.
Thank you.
At this time, Madam Treasurer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor Bennett and Vice Mayor Parton, as well as City Council. I'm here to come before you guys to give you a overview on what's going on in the Treasurer's office at this time. Um, I do have a PowerPoint that I believe Rashad is trying to get up. Oh, it's already here. Okay, so I'm just gonna go over basically my staff at this time. Um, the staff that I'm looking for, my overall goals, um, and then some input on some other information that I have within the PowerPoint. Uh, right now, my current staff, I have my deputy two, which is, um, her name is Juliana White. I'm gonna go ahead and go through what she does and what my staff currently does at this time. For Juliana, she is the postings of the journal entries. She operates our ju- jury duties, sheriff, and state estimated income reconciliation, idea, uh, EDIs, investment recons. She void checks, check requests, purchase orders, and she's basically the backup to the office at this time. We have our deputy one, her name is Lydabel Quinettos. She is the backup to the clerks at this time, the business license, meal tax, animal license, state income, entries, payments, et cetera. Um, we have our part-time clerk, which is Shirley Lacy. She operates as the customer service assistant, processing payments, bank and office runs, um, post office, bank runs, et cetera. Then we have our full-time delinquent tax collector, her name is Vri Clayborne. She analyzes, reviewing, uh, collections of all the delinquent taxes, the DMV withholding, removals. DMV stops hasn't been placed on our account since two thousand nineteen, um, keep that in mind. Um, she is the point of contact with our collection attorney, which is Jason Dunn, um, which is our real estate collection attorney. And she also is getting ready to implement the personal property collections as well. We haven't had a personal property collection since I've been in the office since two thousand nineteen, so we are gonna move forward with that. I do have on here August fifteenth, but we're gonna hopefully have the DMV, um, DMV stops all on the twenty thousand applicants or citizens that we have at this moment, as well as we're moving forward with tax, um, which is our Treasurer's Association, uh, collection, where they will be able to move forward with the personal property taxes, that, the, the, the delinquencies of the taxes. Um, she also deals with lender codes, service codes, um, supplemental bills, payment arrangements. We have a situation where, I'm not for sure if you guys heard of Willie Calvin, I know you guys have heard of Willie Calvin before at ten ten Pelham. Um, she's in the process of getting that situated as far as helping them with making payment arrangements, and this is, will be in the slide as far as us speaking more, as far as Willie Calvin shortening. Um, then we have our temp, Robert Half Associate at this time, his name is Michael Harris. He is continuation of the FY two thousand nineteen, June two thousand nineteen to July of twenty twenty. Now that is a misprint there. Um, will address moving forward for FY twenty-two, creating processes for future employees, FY twenty-two budget, other professional service. We spent over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this particular associate, um, for last year. As of June thirtieth, um, the budget was a hundred and twenty thousand, as of June thirtieth, I can say that it was at a hundred and sixteen thousand that we spent, but we also had overdue, um, invoices, so I do believe that we are above the hundred and twenty thousand that we actually spent for that one per, particular person. So I do believe that we need to, as we all know, have a full-time accountant. You about to say something?
No, I wasn't putting my mind to that.
Oh, sorry. Um, as we know, we do need that full-time accountant, so we would not have to waste money, um, on one particular person, and we can invest in that full-time accountant. Um, so, for example, uh, moving forward, I'm sorry, my new staff that I am, um, hoping to get, which I have already interviewed and have in place my chief deputy. As when I came before you guys, um, earlier in the year, I did advise that I wanted to be very cautious on who we bring in for our chief deputy, we just did not wanna bring in just anybody. Um, I did put the description back out there, actually put a new description, which it actually brought somebody with a better mentality to come in to, to fulfill what we need as far as the chief deputy. Um, that particular person that will come in will be focused on the APA audits, which is the orders of public accounts, uh, unclaimed funds, backup to the treasurer payroll, positive pay, bank errors, supervisor escalations, et cetera. Then we have our lead clerk, which I have as well, she will be starting within the next two weeks. She will be basically the accountability of the front-end duties, process payments, business license, animal license, et cetera. Then we have our full-time accountant that I extremely am thankful for you guys giving us the opportunity to have this particular person. And the reason is, is because this person that we are hoping to get will be invested in Hopewell. Um, this person hopefully will be able to get us out of the mess that I am going to hopefully address in a minute. Um, and this person will be focused on FY two thousand nineteen, FY twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-one, recon, cash recons, uh, miscellaneous demand, deposit accounts, order of public accounts, reports, investments, recon, continuation of accounting processes, automatic bank reconciliation units. And then we have our part-time accountant that we are hopefully gonna bring both of them in together. That person will be the continue, the current flow of FY twenty twenty-two and FY twenty-three, and a backup assistance, um, for the full-time accountant. And then we have our part-time delinquent tax collector that we are going to bring in as well to the team. They will be fulfilling the needs of that, the full-time delinquent tax collector with the DMV withholdings, code enforcement, collection attorneys, researching of delinquent taxes. So, with that said, that is my staff that I will perfectly have with, by the end of this year. And before we move on to Mr. Calvin, um, let's speak upon the accounting part of the Treasurer's office. So, we have Michael Harris, and we have him in, Mr. Harris, if you could please raise your hand. Mr. Harris is our temporary accountant at this time, he came to us in January of two thousand twenty-one. He did, he did leave us September of two thousand twenty-one because Michael Harris is a, um, retired man, and he wants to go hiking and enjoy life. So he did leave us September two thousand twenty-one, and we did actually bring another associate in by the name of Ann. Now, with that said, Mr. Te- Mr. Michael did advise me and Mr. Terry that he will be finished FY twenty nineteen by the end of August. And he is, he's, he's in the conclusion of FY twenty nineteen at this time. And he is stating to me at this moment that he will be here until the end of October. So with that said, I will need to perfectly get that full-time accountant in very soon, so we can get him to train this person and move forward with, before he does leave us. Um, under my administration, a part of my assessment of the office, I have found several administrative errors where corrective actions that are in process of being addressed and could, uh, continue ongoing. Depending on the year of these errors, we have to either, um, make this decision if we're going to... Well, we already made the decision, because depending on the years, we cannot perfectly go back and make any changes or fix anything because that particular year is closed. So we are making clear indications of what those errors are, and we are indicating them, um, on the spreadsheets that we are working on at this time to make sure that, once the auditors do come, they will foresee, they will foresee that, um, what we've already fixed. FY twenty nineteen and FY twenty, as I've mentioned, is our, is already closed. FY twenty twenty-one, moving forward, we can still make changes to those. These things are not detrimental to the Treasurer's office, they are simply administrative errors that while our staff move forward, will, will be trained properly on units to avoid these errors for FY twenty-three. When we are properly trained, we are more efficient and less likely to make error, issues or errors. Also, we are in the process of building a list of responsibilities and procedures, so we can create the accountability and control to better the city. So with that said, um, that's where we are. As far as examples, um, after I'm finished, if you guys need any examples as far as what I'm seeing, as far as the APA recon from previous, or the utility buildings, or any recons that I'm seeing, I could definitely explain that moving forward. Um, and then if you guys need Michael to come up, um, to explain what he needs to s- I could definitely get him to speak upon that as well. Um, moving forward, we have a ten ten Pelham, which is Willie Calvin. Uh, Willie Calvin, Mr. Ward, Mr. Christopher Ward, has spoken upon ten ten Pelham for many, many years. Um, ten ten Pelham, as mentioned, they are, is a property that ha- has over thirty thousand dollars of a delinquencies at this time. If we add the, the attorney upon this amount, it's over sixty-one thousand dollars that they owe as far as overall. Mr. Calvin, when the previous administration was in office, they set up a payment plan of like six hundred dollars a month, and they only made one payment plan. Um, I mean, one six hundred dollar payment that, that particular year. They went back to Ms., well, they went back to the previous treasurer and asked for a reduction in that particular payment plan because of the pandemic. So as you see on the screen, they were making payments, they were making it with the reduction, which did not help them with their taxes. So overall, they only paid approximately like five thousand ninety-two dollars out of the thirty thousand thou- thirty thousand dollars that is owed. And what did, what I wanted to do when they came in front of me was I wanted to move forward with the city and, and see if you guys would move forward with the pursuit, the petition that Ms. Tavia and Mr. Ward was putting forth as far as buying the home and using it as with the program that he s- they suggested. Now, what we've done is we allowed Mr. Calvin to give us eighteen thousand dollars. Well, he vouched it to give us eighteen thousand dollars, and he said he would pay a thousand dollars a month for the remaining of the, the amounts that he owed. I didn't even wanna do that because I feel like that would be a waste of our time because of the payments that he was making, and if he can't make these small payments, how in the world is he gonna make a thousand dollars worth of payments? But we went ahead and moved forward with it, um, we will see how it, it operates and how he's going to fulfill this. If he misses one payment, we will move forward in seeing what you guys would like to do in the future as far as Mr. Calvin's property. And then there's the Treasurer's Goals of twenty twenty-two. I stand on these goals, these are the goals that I ran on for my campaign. And I am so extremely thankful that I am walking in these goals. I am doing every single part of it, and I'm implementing every, every goal that I set. Um, restore fiscal health, ensuring the front-end clerks, deputy one, deputy two, are entering the payments properly. They have to know what they're doing up there to be able to fulfill these needs. So I made sure that I walked, I crawled, well, no, I crawled with them, I held their hand, I walked with them, and now they're fine. So I don't have to, I don't have to do much up the front to be able to make sure that this is right. Um, the customer service, I am working towards providing the best in professional customer service to all citizens, and that is absolutely true, I made a three hundred and sixty when it came, when it comes down to customer service. We don't have any truly, no true complaints as far as the citizens calling, grapping about the Treasurer's office, and I'm thankful for to be able to make that transition. Um, transparency, a daily practice within the workplace of being open and honest with others, no matter how challenging it may be. I make sure I walk this every single day, because this is how we're gonna succeed, is by being open and honest with every single body that comes my way. Um, institute resident-friendly services, easier to make payments online and over the phone. We do not have long lines, I haven't seen long lines this year, I didn't see them last year. Two thousand nineteen, we had long lines going down the hall. We don't have that issue now, and the payments are being posted when they are supposed to be posted on time. Um, then we have earned state accreditation, accreditation, FY twenty twenty-three starts my year. We have created processes to ensure we are moving towards being accredited. Um, every process we, um, we operate, I make sure that we have a book and we, we're writing it down, so we can go back to those processes to make sure that they are being done correctly. Um, and then if we see here, these are all the duties that we operate in the Treasurer's office. Every single piece of these duties are being learnt, handled correctly, and they're gonna be fine. You guys have any questions?
Counselor Gore has a question, and then Counselor Randolph.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Yes. Thank you, Ms. Best, for making sure this was scheduled, I know we had to reschedule it a couple times, but thank you for acknowledging the request to give us an overview of your office, I really do appreciate that. I do have some quick questions, and if you don't have the answer right now, that's fine, um, we did talk beforehand about the presentation, so, um, you may not be prepared for some of these. For the, um, Robert Half position, I understand that you, why you asked us for the position, the budget- For the Robert Half position, I understand that you, why you asked us for the position in the budget to make that full-time essentially, but the budget request is for new monies. The money that you have to pay for Robert Half position, is that incorporated with your other plans for your staff? Or is that just going to be a stand aside for in case you need to hire additional temporary staff?
Right. So with the new budget, I only got twenty thousand dollars for the Robert Half part. So other professional service. And two thousand dollars a week is what we pay them. So if you count that, that's about to be over.
No, that addresses my question because the other money was moved over to that position then.
Yeah, it did. It was.
First, Ann Anderson, the previous treasurer did talk about the need for the city to help and trying to identify another legal firm to address like delinquencies and liens and when we have to challenge it. But that's not with us. That's something the treasurer's office. But I know you have a slide in here about, what was the point in that? Because one of the concerns I had heard in the past was we really don't get a benefit out of what we pay to them.
Right, right, right. So I did put that in there. I put Jason Dunn slash Reed Broughton payments. So to answer your question, I've been here since two thousand nineteen. I have not seen any payments consistent with Reed Broughton. So what they, what they do is they, once they get the payment from the real estate parcel, they'll hold it for a quarter of a year. They'll hold it for two or three or four months. And then they will send us the monies. They, I'm not for sure why they do it that way, but it's not a consistent pattern with Jason Dunn. With Jason Dunn, we've collected over eight million dollars. He, he's collected over eight million dollars to bring back to us as far as the real estate taxes. Reed Broughton, I don't see that with him. So that's another thing, like I have to make sure that if we're in a contract, is that something that we can do as far as get rid of him? Or is it something that you guys will want to move forward with Reed along with Jason Dunn? Because we're getting ready to be with TACS, T-A-C-S, that will be another collection attorney that will be involved as well. And we do not need Reed Broughton.
So I think this requires subsequent conversations. So I'll just ask, I can't direct everything on behalf of council, but I will make a request if you please hold that, just like you did this presentation, and find a way with the intercity manager and our new attorney to figure out how to bring that back to us. And it might, could be a closed session, well, it can't be closed session now, but, because you talked about it. To talk about maybe a work session or legal options for that, if you don't mind, give us some information regarding that. The other two questions I have is just for clarity regarding that property that you're talking about with Calvin. Can I, Mr. Ward, can you give a little more context to what, what we're considering?
So ten-ten Pelham has been a problem property in the City Point District, historic district, for probably decades, I would imagine. As the treasurer mentioned, they are decades behind in arrears on real estate taxes. Ms. Griffin and I, at one point, when we found out about the tax arrears situation, which was probably three and a half to four years ago, we investigated what the options would be in terms of ways that either the taxes, taxes could be paid off or we also investigated what state law would allow the city to do in terms of collecting those taxes. One of those options that state law permits is called a deed in lieu of taxes. And we reached out to Mr. Broughton on numerous occasions and tried to get more information on that to see if that particular statute would apply to the situation. But basically, our understanding was that because of the amount of taxes owed to the city and the number of years in which they were owed, the city could get a judge to actually declare that the city takes the deed of that property in lieu of those taxes. So the city would wipe away the balance due, but then they would become owners of that property. The catch was that the city would have to transfer that deed to a certified, a nonprofit housing group. We had talked to HRHA. They do have a nonprofit arm and they were willing to participate in this where essentially the city would give over the property to the HRHA and the city would demolish the house and they would construct a new house for sale to a, they would construct affordable housing for sale to a low to moderate income family. That was our plan. Granted, that's, that's from a planning standpoint, so the treasurer has other considerations that she has to take into account, such as the city would actually would have ended up purchasing that property even though the property owed us money. It was kind of a backwards, it, it came out strange where it didn't make a whole lot of sense. So I understand the treasurer had to go with the best option that was presented to her. And she has, like I said, has other considerations to take into account other than just from the planning standpoint that Ms. Griffin and I were approaching it.
Thank you so much.
Certainly.
Ms. Foskey, I just have the last question is, when I talked to you, I did share that I wanted to hear a little bit more about some examples of what you're seeing. So thank you for providing your guests here. Is it okay for him to come up to just give us high level in terms of the errors that you're seeing that we need to be aware of?
Sure. And Michael, you can come on up. Now, what I see, I can tell you as far as the APA recon or reconciliation of the utility bills. The previous office was placing either duplicate entries or placing entries in the wrong years or the wrong months. And now we have to basically go back and fix those when the years are closed. So that's what I'm seeing as far as the APA recon and the utility bills, but I will let Michael as well share.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good evening. Not sure if I can give you exactly what you're looking for, but I'm dealing with a situation that's accumulated over time. The, the issues that I'm facing began with a lack of a clear procedures and process in place so that people knew what kind of entries they needed to make, when they needed to be making them. The lack of the timeliness of entries has caused a number of situations that the treasurer referred to as far as duplication of entries. And I've seen that the first time I was here and the second time I was here is I went back and looked at some of the processing that's going through. When you start looking at that, in addition, look at the fact that the periods of two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty are already closed. So in the process of trying to reconcile and control this, this process, we have to do most of this on a spreadsheet type approach since we can't make entries, see that they're posted correctly and then move forward from, from that kind of position. The, the other thing I'm seeing as far as reconciling cash is that, again, there weren't any clear procedures in place. And as we were discussing it at this point with the finance area, we're trying to develop an overall format for that reconcilment process. And to make that move forward, we, we meet with the assistant finance director, usually on a weekly basis, and discuss some of the things that we're seeing and show where we're moving and how far we've moved forward. In an effort to give us the reconciling format that we need, the first step that I've taken is to take the actual munis entries, the general ledger entries that have been made and show them on one side of a sheet and take the actual cash entries that have come in through your master's cash account on the other side and match up all the transactions. When I get through with that process, and I'm probably about eighty percent there, I can then identify the, the transactions that haven't been posted to the general ledger or transactions that are in the general ledger that I'm not seeing on the master account and track down what would needs to be done to, to make the corrections on those.
Thank you so much for your information and being here and working on this.
You.
Thank you.
Counselor Randolph.
Thank you. Ms. Foskey, thank you for being here. Could you tell me who does the training for your staff on munis?
Who, I do. At this point, I do. If it's something that I need to continue training on, I have the IT team that does a tremendous, great job with helping us and guiding us. And then we have our Tyler Connect that we reach out to too. But I do, I've learned everything that we have to. I've placed them all. I have this big old book where I'm sitting down training them.
Okay. APA, when was your last audit?
Our last audit was twenty twenty.
For APA?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Our last audit was twenty twenty-one and that was with the Commonwealth Attorney, the police, and the sheriffs.
Yeah. And your findings, you were great?
Everything was fine. Everything was great.
Okay. And then lastly, I know there was a question that you and I had, there was a customer and there was an issue about finding out, your office finding out about ownership changes for real estate. Has that been cleared up?
It has.
Okay, great. So now that should not present any kind of a problem?
We won't have any issues. So what, what is happening at this time? It goes to Patricia, which is our real estate assessor. She actually now sends us an email.
Great.
And the email indicates the transfers that she has done. That was the missing part. We wasn't getting that and that was the disconnection, so.
And I will just comment because I have been involved with Mr. Ward's office with the Pelham Street. If I remember correctly, the twenty twenty date, a counselor actually pushed to have us continue that. I am not a fan of continuing that simply because it's been a blighted property in my ward and in that area for quite a long time. I'm not currently in favor of it going into a program simply because council has not looked at that program and made a decision on whether we're going to do that and how we're going to do it. And I would prefer this property to go to the steps and be auctioned off in the city to get or recoup whatever we can from it and us move on to clean that up. I'm sorry to the gentleman that owns it, but we, I feel like we've been fair enough and given him enough. So I appreciate you bringing that up tonight. Thank you.
I don't see any of the lights. I just have one question. Does the person reside in ten-ten Pelham Street?
No.
Does he reside in that property?
My understanding is like, like what Ms. Reed Randolph just said, it's vacant. So no one lives in there and the house is not.
So he doesn't live in the house? Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry. I sent the email this morning in reference of the tax rate approval. I do hope that we can all come together to be able to get that approved by the end of this month. FYI.
Okay, so we only have one meeting this month and we don't, we don't meet back until September. Just can you please, for the public, let us know the reasons why you needed to have this done by the end of the month?
Okay.
Oh, give us a, can you please give us a hard date?
A hard date?
Yeah, not like the end of the month because that could be the twenty-seventh. I mean,
Right.
Give us a hard date.
The reason is, is because we did get an extension for the approval of the tax rate with the state. So usually it's in September. We got it until November now. We want to hope to get this in because we have to see which rate, which route you guys will be taking for the citizens because it's, we all know that the taxes may be going up because of the overall state and we have to determine the PPTRA to see how the citizens will benefit on this. If they're going to, we're going to do twenty-three to thirty percent and then they're going to move forward with handling seventy percent of the bill because of the taxes going up. So that is the reason why we need to have it in ASAP.
And hard date is, you don't have a hard date for it? It needs to be in by, do you think we can do it in September or we have to have it by the end of this month?
I, I think it needs to be at the end of this month.
Okay.
Because it was supposed to then when double reason came months ago, but I believe we needed to prolong it because of, I'm not for sure why.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to say that I talked to the commissioner and she indicated it needs to happen before the end of this month simply because the calculations that she's got to go through using the PPTRA that we set has to have a lot of work to be done so she can then in turn, turn around, give it to the treasurer who then sets it based on that and sends the bills out. So.
Yep, that's absolutely correct. And I want to back up with what you're saying. The old, the previous treasurer, we had a, we have a great Excel spreadsheet from Teresa Batten where from two thousand and ten to two thousand and sixteen, where she was able to calculate the PPTRA, it stopped two thousand seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one. So what Ms. Deborah Randolph is saying, I have to go back and pinpoint two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one and it's going to take me a long, maybe a month or two to be able to do all that. So that's the reason why. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
I do. If we just said that we only have one meeting this month, don't we need to be trying to set a work session?
That's what the email, that was the email and we're always working on it. Okay, we can.
I'm available anytime, guys. So just let me know when you guys are ready to do it. And then we just have to talk.
Because we still have to, yeah, we have to get with.
That's fine. I'm just.
I understand.
I think we can send a poll out tomorrow.
There's a poll that's already working through. I think Molly's already sent it.
Oh, okay.
Mike, you sent something out for us after her email?
I, did you copy me on my email?
Um, yeah, you, well, I put the city's council. I don't believe I put Molly's name on the email. Okay. So I can forward it to you and then we can. Okay. That was my goal.
Thank you.
Any other questions, guys?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're moving to the public hearings. Amending the planned unit development at Anchor Point.
Good evening again. Are you all ready for me to start? Tonight's first public hearing is an amendment to the planned unit development for the Anchor Point development. The applicants are Anchor Point Ventures LLC and Dazwell Properties. I'm going to repeat some of the slides that you've already seen during your work session just for the sake of the members of the public who are not in attendance then. Nineteen eighty-six, city council approved the rezoning of the, what we are now calling Anchor Point from R-one, R-four to an R-four planned unit development. I believe it was originally known as Beacon Ridge Development. Since that time, in nineteen ninety, city council has made a few changes to the master plan development for Anchor Point. In nineteen ninety, the Oxford Drive and Robin Hood Road Drive connections were eliminated. In nineteen ninety-seven, the West. In nineteen ninety-seven, the West Broadway and the Queen Anne Drive connections were eliminated. In two thousand and six, the unit mix was reduced by about thirteen percent. And then your new request before you this evening reduces the units. I'm going to have to correct that number thirty-nine percent, because I was informed right before this meeting, the number count that we've been using is ten units off. So it's going to be more of like a thirty-seven percent reduction. Here's the opportunity where I can correct that count. As of today, there are forty-one constructed townhomes, sixty-three condominium units, and thirty-eight single-family detached homes that have already been built in the development. The applicants are here tonight to request to reduce the allowable density. So that means as of today, based off the changes made in two thousand and six, a total of five hundred and twenty-three units could be built in the Anchor Point development. The request this evening is to reduce that number. And the number is not, the total number is not three eighteen, it's three twenty-eight. So the correct breakdown is, at completion, the existing sixty-three condominium units would be a hundred and eighty-five townhomes instead of the one seventy-seven, and a total of eighty single-family dwellings instead of the seventy-eight. That brings the total to three twenty-eight, three hundred and twenty-eight units. The planning commission first addressed this application at a May fifth meeting where it was tabled. That was their actual public hearing. We came back on May twenty-fifth for a work session where obviously there was no action taken. And then at the planning commission's June second regular meeting, the planning commission did approve the application to amend the planned unit development, and that approval was three to one. Again, we presented to you back on July twelfth at your work session, and then of course, tonight is your public hearing. This is a simple map I had included in your work session presentation. It just shows those areas that are changing from the master plan development as it exists today. The areas that have circles on them are the condo towers that will no longer be permissible in the development. The star indicates the one condominium tower that's already existing there today, and of course, would remain. And then the two arrows at the bottom show the primary areas of new construction. Reduced, actually, it would be reduced new construction. This is the phased development map that has been supplied by H.H. Hunt, who is the builder that has been selected by the applicants to finish out this development. As you can see, phase one consists primarily of finishing out the single-family detached homes with some additional townhomes to be constructed in that unfinished section. Phase two is, again, single-family home development with a few townhomes thrown in there as well. And then the final phase would be phase three. Again, it's, would be primarily a townhome section with a few single-family homes. After getting through the planning commission, the planning commission has recommended approval of the reduced density with agreement from the developer to install streetlights on every cul-de-sac per VDOT standards to provide easement that connects Eagle Drive to easement that extends from West Broadway, and to provide easement extending from Eagle Drive to Queen Anne Drive. The graphics below that show the direction of those easements as requested from your work session. You wanted to see a graphic of that. One of the other questions that came out of your work session was how will this development relate to Atwater Park? And as you can see here, this is the, provided to me by the Recreation and Parks Department. This is the Atwater Park Improvement Concept Plan that they hope to implement based upon council's approval and allocation of, I think, some special funding from rescue money. This is the plan that they would like to implement. As you can see, there at the top of that map, that trail system runs right through, of course, the city owns that property already, and that trail system runs right along the made road into the Anchor Point development. And it would just be a minor alteration to actually extend that trail all the way up to an access point at the main entrance to Anchor Point. I believe the question was, had I talked to the developers about this? I personally did not bring this up to them for a couple of reasons. One, this plan, Parks, Wreckin' Parks already has a way to solve that connection problem, assuming the funding comes through. Number two, it's city-owned land, and so I, I felt like it was if anyone's responsibility at the time to do anything park-wise and connection-wise, that it would be a city responsibility. And then after a discussion with Mr. Anderson, the city engineer, if funding does not come through rescue money-wise to make improvements to Atwater Park, this trail connection from Anchor Point Development to the park is a prime candidate for TAP funding, which is transportation alternative funding. And in Mr., in Austin's opinion, this project would score very high to make that trail connection. One of your other questions that came out of the work session had to do with schools and the impact the development on schools. Dr. Hackney, I had several discussions with her. She regrets not being able to be here tonight. She had every intention of being here to answer your questions, but her travel plans were messed up. She's been out in Oklahoma, and I, she should be home by now, but she indicated to me that she could not be here in person. So she did send me her comments in an email. She states, bottom line, we should be able to accommodate the numbers. Running best estimate calculations, this would increase, this, meaning the Anchor Point amendment and the build-out, would increase us by about sixty-six students across K through twelve, or approximately forty-four elementary and twenty-two secondary. It would have limited impact for secondary and would increase elementary. She has a parenthetical reference here. It says DuPont by about eight kids per grade level. This would increase us about two to three classrooms at that school. Continuing on in the conversation, she says, the only other factor I would add is that our enrollment has actually been trending down slightly for the last few years, and this would almost offset our anticipated student increases as a result of this project. So that is the superintendent's comments about impact on the schools. I further asked her about bus stops. I know that bus stops has been a concern. And she says, bus stops are assessed every year based on anticipated enrollment, and additional bus stops could be added as needed. Those were the only comments I had from Superintendent Hackney. Moving on, I know there was another question about impacts on traffic. So Mr. Anderson, city engineer, would, will present to you what he's been doing with that.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Council. Do I have permission to show a spreadsheet on the screen that's outside of this presentation?
I don't see anyone opposing. Yeah.
I apologize that I didn't have it in time for the agenda packet, but we have been working on this traffic study, and we're pretty pleased with the results of it. How do I present?
Do you have it on your, on the?
Yeah, it's pulled up on the computer screen. All right, and as Mr. Ward updated the unit counts, these counts are also going to be ten units off. I use the counts that were in the agenda packet. All right, the top rows, and let me first explain what this, what you're looking at here. We used trip generations, which are the total in-and-out trips of a vehicle based on the land use. There were two different factors. We had one that was combination for condos and townhouses. We had another for single-family detached homes. And the first, the first set of rows that you're looking at, you'll see that there's three distinct columns. You have the approved two thousand and six development plan with trip generations AM and PM. You have the, at the far right, you have constructed, which is the current conditions. And then in the middle, you have the proposed twenty twenty-two, which is the current constructed plus the proposed, again, off by ten units. And peak hour of adjacent street traffic, in layman terms, is the highest one hour between seven AM to nine AM, and then four PM to six PM, which is your traditional morning and evening rush hours. The second set of rows in the middle of the page is the trip generation peak hour of generator. And this is the highest one hour regardless of the time of day. And you'll notice I've highlighted these cells at the bottom, because this actually generated a higher number than the traditional peak AM and PM. I, I can't explain exactly the factors behind this, but by plugging it all into the software, it generated higher numbers than the traditional hours. It could be shift work, military, other factors such as that, that generate higher numbers. And you can see under the approved two thousand and six development plan, the total trips per day, and again, these are theoretical numbers that are calculated, for AM is two twenty-one, PM is two sixty-eight, and we assign that as the a hundred percent condition, which is the current approved plan. Over on the right, you'll see the AM and PM of ninety-nine and one twenty-one, which is about forty-five percent of the total theoretical trips in the two thousand and six plan. And then you'll see the proposed twenty twenty-two, constructed and proposed, which is one seventy-six and two nineteen. And that generates seventy-nine percent or eighty-two percent of the approved two thousand and six plan. And then down at the bottom, we have the total weekday in-and-out. We're not as concerned with this, because we look at the peak to see what's the, what's the worst traffic condition out there, and that drives decisions such as traffic calming, cut-throughs, intersection improvements, any kind of decisions like that that are made. But just to give you an idea, the two thousand and six has a three thousand one sixty-eight number of total in-and-out. Constructed, as today, it's eleven fifty-eight, which is about thirty-seven percent of the two thousand and six number. And then finally, what's being proposed, again, it's slightly off with the ten units, but about seventy-six percent of that total. Now, because I knew you were very curious and you'd want to know, where are we at today versus what are we going to be when these hundred and eighty-six units are added? Again, they're going to be off by a few percentage points, but our total peak increase, so looking at the peak time of day traffic, it's going to increase by seventy-eight percent in the morning, eighty-two percent in the evening. And your total increase, so looking at your weekday total in-and-out, it's about a hundred and nine percent increase. Those numbers shouldn't be surprising, because we're adding a hundred and seventy-six homes, when the existing is one forty-one. So we're more than doubling the amount of homes, so seeing a number of a hundred and nine percent increase in trip generations is what's to be expected. So these are all theoretical numbers. This is a high-level traffic impact analysis. If we wanted to do a deeper dive, what we would do is, in the next few weeks or a month, we, we like to do it this time of year when schools in and people are in their routine. We could set out tube counters to get actual counts of where we're at today. And then we would want to set tube counts out once the three phases are implemented. And then we can talk about, these are actual numbers instead of theoreticals, and do we need to make any improvements at that time? Similar to the school, let's see what kind of traffic comes, and then we can address that with different measures at that time. And we've done this in the past at Cobblestone. We did counts in two thousand and fourteen, built, rebuilt Cedar Level Road, and then came back and did counts last year to get that similar before-and-after comparison. So that's our analysis on the traffic. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Counselor Gore can go after me, because mine will be very quick. I did go to the work session and the meeting, and it was great. You know, H.H. Hunt enjoyed it. The only question I had, I know that we are, there was a conversation about having a second access. So is that what you're diving into right now, as far as doing the tube counters to see what type of improvements would you, what type of improvements would you make depending on the tube counters?
So what I would want to do, and I've talked with Mr. Ward about this, what I think we should do as a city with our own, I have a small management consulting budget, and I've done tasks like this before, is before H8, assuming that this goes forward, before they would start, we would lay out, we would deploy the tube counters. We'd go out on River Road, we'd do Atwater, we'd do Anchor Point, we'd do Cameron's Landing. We want to see where everyone's going today. And then we would collect all that data and keep it, keep it with us, and kind of know where we're at today. And then once the three phases are built, we would do it again, it's probably a year and a half, two years from now, and see what the total impact is. That doesn't, this decision doesn't really play in too much to the secondary access, because I believe the desire or the, the way it was steered at the work session at the planning commission was that it would be gated, and it would be used for emergency access. I am prepared to talk about that. That was one of Counselor Gore's issues.
She's going to ask you that question.
I'll wait.
She's going to ask you that question. So the tube counters is for you to get information, and what are the improvements?
So these are, again, these are theoretical trip generations. So the tube counters would give me actual, and we would run them, I'm sure you guys have driven over them before. We would run them for about fourteen days, so we get two sets of weekdays and a couple of weekends in there, and make sure we know what the traffic's doing today.
So my question is, I understand that, let's just hypothetically say that it is a hundred and nine percent increase. What improvements are you guys planning to make if these numbers are correct?
If it's a hundred and nine percent, and this is just theoretical, I wouldn't recommend any improvements today. What, what are possible improvements if we get something that, and this happened to us in Cobblestone with the traffic diverter. We got numbers that were way higher than they were seven years ago, with Parkview Point and other reasons why people were cutting through. There are a couple of options you could do. When you, when you, when you approach Atwater Road on River Road, there's a right-turn lane as you come from the city. As you come from Prince George County, there is no left-turn lane.
Yeah.
You have to wait. If there's a car coming, you have to wait and, or, or go around them if there's room. You have to wait if there's a car coming. You have to wait and, or, or go around them if there's room. You could add a left turn lane there, dedicated left turn lane. You could do intersection improvements at Atwater and Anchor Point Boulevard with a dedicated turn lane. And then after that, I know no one wants to hear this, but you could potentially consider other access like Queen Anne or even expanding upon the Atwater, making it a permanent access. Again, I'm not recommending any of that. I've, I've driven out there a lot. I know staff has, and I know Ben and I have been out there a few times. Chief Rupert have been out there a few times. It's very little traffic today. And especially on the Anchor Point side because it is partially developed. Cameron's Landing does have a little bit more traffic, but it's very little traffic out there today, and I don't think, I think the current infrastructure can support this additional units.
Okay. My que- my question was mainly based to let the public know that you guys are prepared for anything, any increase or any improvements that need to be made, right? So, and that's it. Counselor Gore?
Go ahead and answer the question that you answered in regards to the access road. And the only reason I'm asking is, as I mentioned in my email, it keeps coming back up, and while we're doing a public hearing, it's best for you to address it again.
So Atwater Road, there's a few reasons that it was chosen. One, when we reviewed the, the proffered conditions from 2006, we noticed that there was a potential for a Queen Anne connection to Eagle Drive. It was removed at that time. So we figured there was a reason it was removed back then, so we didn't pursue that as the secondary exit or ingress egress with this proposal. The second reason is when the Phase 3 is built and there's citizens, residents occupying that area, if there's a breach of the stormwater pond, if it, if the culvert washes out or the road some, somehow becomes impassable, they would have no way out as well as the Anchor Point Marina. They would also be trapped back there. So that's why we chose the Atwater Road pump station as the alternate secondary ingress egress.
Thank you. My other question is in regards to the tubes. So I talked to Mr. Ottman when he was here to ask if that could be done in advance of this. One, I do want to thank you for the traffic information. I did ask for that as well, and I do appreciate you calculating this. Just so I can get clarity, in order for you to do that, you would have to use your consulting. Okay.
Yeah, we have a small amount set aside for things that come up during the year. There's a very good reason why we didn't want to do it too soon because school just got back in session. This is their third week, I believe. And we really like to do these tube counts when schools end because that's when people are in their normal routine, parents, students, you know, students that drive to school, buses. We want to capture all that in the traffic study. So it really can be done, you know, I was kind of targeting maybe, I don't know when the intersections start, but maybe later this month, early September, kind of in that people get into their swing of their routine and try to get an accurate count of where we're at today with everyone's normal weekday routine.
Okay. I do appreciate that, and thank you for that clarity. I have other questions for Mr. Ward, but I'll wait for others to ask Mr. Ottman.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Counselor Randolph?
I'll be brief. Mr. Anderson, I grew up in that area, so I'm very familiar with what happened with Queen Anne and how ugly it got with the potential ingress egress there. My question is, Atwater has been improved in the front part of it, but I don't believe the entire street, all the way back to the cul-de-sac or turnaround, has been improved. Is that correct still?
It, it has not been improved past, is it Robin, is it Robin Hood? I'm not sure. The, the front phase where you have the parks and the soccer fields, that has been improved. But once you get past the, the main intersection, I believe that's its current condition.
And, and that's what I remember. I haven't been down there in the last week or so. But my question is, then if we're looking at a secondary ingress egress, which I understand why you're doing that, and it won't be used all the time, but wouldn't we still need, due to that escape route, if there is something that does happen with the main access, wouldn't we need to ensure that the, at least the rest of Atwater to that secondary ingress egress point is also improved?
I don't think so, just because it is going to be a secondary and we hope a seldomly used connection. The actual connection to Atwater Road to the Phase 3, which is using existing right-of-way, that is currently its only purpose, is there's one resident back there that uses it for their primary entrance, and then the pump station access for maintenance and repair. We would improve that connection. And by improve, I'm, I mean paving it, doing some subgrade improvements, shoulder improvements, and paving it around 18 to 20-foot wide, which is all within our existing right-of-way. And then, of course, gating it and leaving it closed unless for emergencies. With the seldom use, I don't think we need to do any improvements to Atwater, and, and I don't, I know personally, we don't have any Atwater, major Atwater improvements in our five-year capital plan. We haven't really planned for that beyond what's already there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Ward, I wasn't sure if you were done with answering the rest of the questions. I have two questions. I did ask about the trees. I'm getting emails in regards to concerns about how many trees will be removed. We talked about that at the work session, but it's coming back up again, so.
Sure, I'll, I'll continue with my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can skip over the Queen Anne pump station capacity question and come back to it because I know that, that is a valid question that you all had some concerns about, so I'll just, I'll skip that and we can come back to it because Mr. Byerly's not able to be here this evening, so Mr. Anderson was going to speak about that as well. There was some questions about potential loss of, of tree canopy with the development. I utilized our, actually, it's a real estate assessors program that shows, this is the most recent aerial I could get. It's from early 2022. It's earlier this year. I tried to highlight those, put those areas where the new development is going to go and those areas that may have tree cover at this point. So you will see that down Eagle Drive, where the new townhomes are going, so I'm, I'm on the picture on the left here. And that's an area that does have a little bit of tree cover where new townhomes are proposed. And then, of course, the square box above that, which is the, pretty much the entire Phase 2 development. As you can see, it's, it's, for the most part, there is no tree cover there. This entire development was cleared at one point, and the trees that have come back are, are just that. They, they have come back due to the lack of, of this project being finished. Up near the Marina is probably the largest area that they'll see some trees be taken down for this development. So those were the primary areas where we will lose trees, but I did want to make the comment that our site plan requirements and our subdivision requirements, we do have tree canopy requirements. And through the site plan process, the developer will have to be providing a landscape plan. So what trees you see that are being removed for the development, you will also see during the site plan phase of this project that new trees will be put in, as well as other forms of landscaping. It's not just tree cover. So I'm hoping that that sufficiently answers your question or, or the question from, from residents that you're receiving. So that pretty much ends my presentation. I did want to give Mr. Anderson and our fire chief, Chief Rupert, and Mr. Edwards, who all have, I, I wanted to thank all of them while I had the opportunity for helping me out during this whole process. They've been fantastic and have really gone the distance on this. But they are all here in attendance this evening to answer any additional questions you have before we turn it over to H.H. Hunt. So Austin, did you want to make any comments about Queen Anne, or did you all have any questions about Queen Anne pump station that you would like him to address? Yes?
I think the question was, could it handle the new, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Ward. You did a great job.
It's a very easy question, very difficult answer. The Queen Anne pump station right now is, it, it's, it's, I don't know if it's at capacity, but it's currently struggling to can, to contain what it's got today. And there's a reason for that. The, the flow from, the waste flow from the prison and the jail flows beside the Queen Anne pump station. I don't, I don't know if it goes directly in it, but it's in the vicinity. And that's the primary reason for the capacity issues that are there today. If you drive to the Queen Anne pump station, there, it's, it's not a secret. If you go back there, there are temporary pumps to help handle the flow today. So looking at what waste would be sent additional with these 185 units, that will have to be addressed through either pump station improvements or pipes coming in and out of the pump station improvements. We knew this was going to be a problem when, when H.H. Hunt first approached the city and we started working through all this at the staff level. We knew it was going to be a problem. We alerted Hopewell Water Renewal, and they started a flow analysis. That flow analysis is complete, and they're assessing all the numbers, and they're going to provide a report soon to Hopewell Water Renewal, Mr. Byerly, for review. Now, that's going to basically tell them where they're at today and recommend, recommendations, how to, how to improve it to handle today's flow. We know we're going to add more flow to it if this is approved, so we've been sharing information with the engineer that's working for Hopewell Water Renewal as far as number counts. And then when H.H. Hunt gets more into their site plan, they will actually be able to provide flow calculations of what they plan to send to each pump station. So the Atwater Road pump station actually flows to the Queen Anne, and Queen Anne gets all of that waste and, and forces it on to its next, its next spot where it goes. So once we have all those numbers, we can better plan for the Queen Anne pump station. But the long story short of it is, it's, it's struggling to handle its current condition. So by adding more homes, it's certainly going to exacerbate that issue. But we're all aware of it. We're processing it as, as it comes along, and we're sharing information between water renewal and, and then the developer about what, what next steps to take.
Sorry, trying to get Ms. Palom back online. Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Okay.
Any, any questions for any other staff members here, or would you like to have any questions for H.H. Hunt? They have representatives here tonight as well.
I have questions for H.H. Hunt.
I'm sorry?
I have questions for H.H. Hunt.
Okay. Counselor Gore?
For H.H. Hunt, thank you, Mr. Ward. I have two questions, or three questions that came in from staff, well, citizens. First, I listened to Mr. Ward's remarks regarding the park. But the, as I talked to you, the goal is to have a playground in that neighborhood or something that the children can walk to. I understand that there's plans to parks and recreation, but there's also funding needs. So if and when that happens, that connection will be available. I know when you were here, Mr. Ottman's the one that brought it up and was like, maybe instead of a park, we can do that connection piece. I do still want to have a conversation if you guys would be willing to do the connection piece or, or not. But maybe it'd be simpler if we just, if we are still looking at having that playground by the pool, that little small play area. I think that would probably be the good solution in the interim, is just to just go ahead and do that so we know there's something on the site. So is that something you guys are still having on the table?
That's something we're looking at. Yes, ma'am.
Because without that, remember, they have to walk all the way down the road. There's not sidewalks that takes them all the way down. So for me, something needs to happen in regards to playground. Either you have that on the site or either the city partners with you to have that connection piece put in place in order for me to support this. The other questions, Mayor Luff, was she asked me two questions for you? She's questioned about the size of the single-family homes. And I know this is the purpose of asking for approval, to have a, a smaller amount. Key to state for the record, why that is, the number is 1,500. So she, when she comes back, maybe she can hear, we can refer back to her.
So you're talking about the actual square footage of the house?
The 1,500.
Sure. So we've been working on this project for nine months. Our sales team dug into a competitive market analysis. They came up with this square footage. It's a square footage that we use across Richmond, the Richmond area. We verified that with other real estate market studies from Market Graphics, Integra, Zonda. It's, it's a product that we, that we build, that we sell. It's popular. And what we did with this, if you look at all of the products that we're offering, we have square footages from 1,300 to 2,800. We, we can, we have something for everybody in this neighborhood. And I think that was our goal, was to try to get every bit of the market we could, to bring some life and some vibrancy back into that neighborhood.
So she might have follow-up questions regarding that, but the other question is in regards to the house style.
It's not what I, when I knew, when I heard that H.H. Hunt was coming, I just have to be honest, I was so hyped. I was really excited. But then I seen the, you know, the plans, and it doesn't look as, it, it doesn't, it, it's not a brand. When I think of H.H. Hunt, this is not the brand I think of. I just was making that comment to, and I know that, I just had another question. What is the price range of the homes in that area in Anchor Point at this time? What are the ranges? I know what we have here as far as what they're going to sell it for, but what is the, would you happen to know? Okay, the real estate value of the homes in Anchor Point in average. If you don't know, that's fine. Give me one second. Is there a motion to extend?
I move that we extend the meeting until we finish R1.
Okay. So that, that was just my concern. It just doesn't look, oh, excuse me. Roll call.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Palom?
Counselor Palom?
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harton?
Yes.
Motion passes to extend meeting to complete R1.
So I don't know if she has any other comments, but for me, the question would be, making it match the other homes in the neighborhood or having a little bit more pizzazz. What is the plan for that to adjust, I guess, the concerns in regards to?
Curvature?
Yes.
Well, I mean, that, I mean, that, those are, those are houses that we do sell in Richmond and in Raco County, Chesterfield County, and people love them. So, I mean, it's in the eye of the holder. But they are very popular for plans.
But, yeah, I know that too. And, you know, also, I just had some comments from some, you know, some concerned air, people that, residents that live in the area about the style as well. So that's the reason why I'm bringing it up.
I understand.
Yeah. And that was my only comment.
And just to kind of go along with the style question, I guess it's really on the same theme is, I feel like, you know, if, if we're, you know, as a city, you know, coming, you know, allowing you guys to, you know, make changes to the conditional use permit, you know, preferably it would be nice to see, you know, the size of houses to either stay at what the sizes were originally, you know, proposed for, or, you know, to see them a little bit bigger. And kind of the same thing that we just had with our work session on the Crescent Hill Avenue is that, you know, you're, you're coming into a established neighborhood, and it would be nice to, you know, see some, your bigger housing. So then that way, you know, we're kind of, you know, Um, so then that way, you know, we're kind of, you know, tackling and, you know, trying to bring in a, a bigger clientele, um, you know, into that neighborhood as well. Um, so I mean, that would be, you know, be one of my, you know, recommendations that, you know, I, I hope that you guys would, you know, please consider, you know, increasing the square footages of the house.
Well, we're, we're kind of boxed in because you've got multiple factors dealing with this project. It's a revitalization project in, in terms of, we're going in there, we're trying to fix things. We're trying to squeeze certain houses on certain lots that can't get much bigger. Lot sizes that are out there are what they are. And margins are thin, construction's high. Uh, but we feel like we've put a quality H.H. Hunt product out there that we're, we're proud of. And we're, we'd be excited to build in Hopewell.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Denton? He's looking at me, knows I'm okay.
I know the question.
I echo a little bit of what they've said. Real estate is very important to me. It's, it's fed me for thirty-seven years. So, and I know Hopewell pretty well. And I know that area pretty well. And I just, did you look at the homes that are already built there? Do you know the average square footage of those homes?
The, the actual single-family home?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. There's fourteen twenty-five, fifteen seventy-five, seventeen thirty-four, and we are building fifteen hundred to twenty-eight hundred.
Okay.
We're going to build, build bigger homes out there than some of the guys out there.
The single homes will be at least fifteen hundred.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That I can live with. I like that. Townhouses, I, I understand the thirteen hundred a little bit better. Because some people just, maybe it's a single person. That's all they need. So you're providing what they need.
Sure.
So I'll go along with you on that thirteen. That's a big concession right there.
Sure, absolutely.
To go to that thirteen hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
But I do share the mayor's and Counselor Gore's concern about the, the markups of the homes. The, to me, they need something to make them more attractive or eye-catching curb appeal.
Sure.
That's the good word. And a little bit of brick or an extra gable or hip roof. I mean, a little something to, to make it, we want this to be a little, it is a rural community. So we'd like for it to be complimentary to everything else out there. Uh, Cameron Landing has some nice homes in it. We want it to be, and I know, I've talked to my builder and he says, H.H. Hunt builds a quality home. So I'm not questioning your ability to do this. I think that the people will be very happy with this. I will vote for it. I, I like to see more homes in Hopewell. The other thing that kind of concerned me is the rental aspect. Hopewell has fifty-five percent rental properties. So I think as counselors, we are trying to get more own-occupied homes. It's just, go in any community, your owner occupied homes. Stay better maintained. People take pride more so in things they have to pay for.
Sure.
So that concerns me somewhat. That, I'm just, not for rental homes. Especially in that facility. So I, I hope I haven't said too much, but I mean, overall, I think it's wonderful. I think what you're doing is great. I like the fifteen hundred. I like, I've, I'm living with the thirteen hundred. You could do something with the, the facades.
Sure.
And watch the rentals. That scares me. That really does. That's my number one concern.
That, I know, I understand your concern, but that's, that's kind of out of our control. Once we, once we build it, develop it and sell the home to someone, what they actually decide to do with it after the fact is kind of.
Will, will you have covenants and restrictions?
So we do have a covenant in our proffer conditions that, uh, indeed restrictions that will limit one individual to ownership of a maximum two homes that could be used for rental purposes. And that was, that was a condition that was approved with this, um, in two thousand and six. So we kept that, that proffer in there.
I don't think we had fifty-five percent rental homes at that time.
Sure.
And we're trying to, to get, we're trying to lower that ratio.
I understand.
We want it to be a community where homeowners can come and, and, and flourish. But that, that does concern me. But other than that, I'm okay.
And I, I, I'm trying to remember the figure and I can look at past sales in Zillow. I know you brought up previous home values, but I know that the average home in Hopewell was like two oh-two over the last few months resale value. So, I mean, our, our townhomes start at two seventy-five. So I, we're in, we're a little higher than what's currently in Hopewell. But just to follow up on that.
Keep those, keep them up there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you and I appreciate you all coming tonight. Thank you.
And my last question, I promise. When you, uh, do you sell the home first before you build it? Is there a commitment prior to? Are you guys just going to completely build and then hopefully get?
Well,
because that's, that is a concern.
It generally depends on the market and how, and market conditions at the time. Most likely what we'll do is we will build one and have that as our model home and then see how that goes first. And let, let folks pick out what floor plan they want, what, what finishes they want and go from there. If it gets to the point where we're, it's very, very popular, we're going to pick our best ones and start building them.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Counselor Gore?
This is my basic question. You're not going to pick on me all night. Um, and this is in Word four. I have to ask my questions. Mr. Ward, this is a PUD, correct? So that means we can ask for additional items on this, correct? For consideration? For what, if, when we approve it, right?
Yeah, so based on your earlier comments from the conditional use permit.
Was this considered the same?
No.
Oh, was it, they're different? Okay.
Uh, your comments earlier about proffers were correct. That did not pertain to a conditional use permit.
It's for the PUD.
Correct.
So I had it backwards.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm sorry I didn't catch it at the time, but it went right over my head.
It's okay. I just had them reversed in my head. I don't know what to do then because I want to support this, but I really want the park. And, um, I know, I'm just, I'm talking to him about what.
Right. The park is on the site plan and it's.
It, it, okay, that's funny clarification.
It is part of his PUD requirements.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The connections is what we need to work on.
Okay, but the park is there, so it.
The playground park is required as part of his
Okay.
open space.
Requirements.
As a part of the PUD.
Okay, so you addressed my concern. The only thing is, um, the, um, visual part, but we can't really change anything about that. We just let you know. So, but, and this, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think he's trying to answer.
Yeah, they should shutters. Sure, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that, those are things like shutters and there's other architectural ad-homes that could be added when the houses are built. I mean, those are, those are things we do offer to, you know, to help the curb appeal, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. You addressed my concern. Thank you for that.
And just to update, we did update our proffers since the last meeting to address the streetlights. Um, if a streetlight is missing in front of a new construction home that appears on the approved lighting plan that was approved, we will install that before we get the CO um, for that house. So those will go in. And then we will dedicate, uh, sixty feet of right-of-way to the city of Hopewell at the terminus of Eagle Drive to be used for future road access at either West Broadway or Queen Anne if, if you see the need for that at a later date.
Thank you for that. And thank you for being so amenable throughout this process. Not so, I think staff for working on this and thank you, Mr. Ward, for addressing all of our concerns.
Okay. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I have two signed for this. Steve Mergan?
Mayor Bennett, you want me to read them?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All persons addressing counsel shall approach the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number, and limit comments to five minutes. No person shall be permitted to address counsel a second time until all others have been heard and no one may speak more than twice on any subject in any one meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to counsel as a body. Any questions must be asked through the mayor only and there shall be no discussion without permission of the mayor. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before counsel and removed subject to appeal to a majority of counsel.
Thank you. Excuse me. Uh, Madam Pluck, are you timing?
I'm going to time it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, uh, my name is Steve Morgan. I am here representing, uh, the Homeowners Association at Anchor Point's waterside townhouses.
Can you speak into the mic and?
Waterside townhouses. Can you hear me now?
Uh, can everyone hear him? Yes.
Okay. I serve as the, as, as the vice president on the HOA, so I'm representing them. I'll go fairly quickly. Uh, point of order, I heard from Councilman Pelman that she wanted to see, um, the square footage to be about thirteen hundred square feet for townhomes. Well, I'm a, I'm a homeowner of one of the townhomes and it is currently at two thousand one hundred and twenty-two square feet. So we would hope that the new townhomes would be that size or greater as opposed to choosing something that's thirteen hundred square feet. We also talked about a hundred and eighty-five, I think, new, um, townhomes and, and, um, single-family homes that would be coming into the neighborhood. My question would be, we talked about traffic. What will be doing with the existing pool access? Today, uh, that one pool serves the existing, uh, residents. We pay an HO fee to support that. So we'd hope that the new one would have consideration about pool and also the, uh, access to the tennis courts. Also, there's a question around what would the price point be? You've talked about square footage. We'd like to get a feeling for, based on today's square, day's building price, what would you see, foresee the price to be? You, you, you talked about a square footage from thirteen hundred to, I think, twenty-eight hundred is in the plan. But what would the average price to be if you were to build it today? Assuming you've got approval to move forward with phase one, what would that price point be? The single, the single-family homes that are going in there right now, that's going to be closing this month, is at three hundred and fifty thousand. We would not want to see something that's coming in under three hundred thousand for single families when we're currently selling at three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Excuse me, three hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet. I'll say it again. That's too high. Uh, at three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars is the cost of the existing homes that are being sold right now at current pricing. Townhomes are roughly around two seventy-five, two eighty. So I think you align with that information. And then lastly, we'd like to know what would be the timing for phase one? When would you get started with this, assuming approval would, would go forward? So those are the questions and the comments that, uh, are coming from the HOA. Big concern around the pool access is, is a concern. Uh, what would the pool access be for existing members, given that you're talking about bringing in a hundred and eighty-five new occupants, I mean, new single-family homes and townhomes? If you assume four times, four people in each, uh, household, that brings us to around seven hundred more people coming into the pool. And so how is that going to support the existing area that we have today? So I believe that addresses in the five minutes that I have, the concerns that we have. If we could get a response to that, that would be great. So I could take that back to the HOA or we could, uh, perhaps have another meeting on it. Questions for me?
So we don't have any, um, there's no response during a public hearing. But we will consider that. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. It's my first time coming before, so I hope I didn't violate any, uh, protocol coming forward. Thank you.
No, you did great. Thank you. I, I have a second person here. I can't read the name. I didn't bring my glasses. I want to say Bennett because there's a B and a E and it looks like two Ts at the end. But it's not. So did someone sign up to speak on this evening's, um, public hearing? Someone other than Mr. Steve Mergan? Okay. Is there any one? Is there anyone that would like to speak who hasn't had a chance to sign up? No? Public hearing is now closed. Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes, um, I think with some of the questions, um, that we've had on just the style of the house and, you know, seeing if potentially, you know, you might be able to look at, um, you know, making them a little bit bigger. Um, I'd like to, uh, table this until the next meeting, the first meeting in September, uh, to make a decision on.
I'll second. Roll call. Counselor Denton, did you want to say something?
The moment, the motion is to table
Counselor Denton?
this item with H.H. Hunt until the first city council meeting in September, which is September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Counselor Randolph?
Counselor Denton, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to ask what the original motion was supposed to be for us to vote on tonight, Mr. Ward? What were you all asking us to actually do tonight?
We, uh, the ask was to approve the, um, the amendment to the master plan development for Anchor Point as presented essentially, uh, with the unit count, the corrected unit count. Uh, because you do want to specify that allowable density. And any, um, uh, the proffered conditions, if, if you were accepting all or some of the proffered conditions. That's the request for the for council action.
Okay, so let me be clear. The proffered actions were given to us by what has already been, um, uh, presented by the, um, planning commission.
Mr. Martin presented you with new proffered conditions this evening that,
Right.
I didn't know about until this afternoon.
Okay.
Um, they added the, the, uh, request from the planning commission about the two easements.
Right.
And I believe in the streetlights, the adding, yeah, the finishing out the streetlights and the cul-de-sacs.
But that does not, if we approve that tonight, that does not preclude us from adding additional proffers, or does that?
You, you are not permitted to, allowed to add proffers.
Okay, that's what I thought. So anything that we talked about here tonight, if we wanted to do anything about that, we would have to, uh, have the planning commission or the particular, uh, builder would have to add those themselves, correct?
Correct. And what, what you're, what you are amending would be the number of units and the, uh, the, essentially the sizes which were proffered.
Right.
To come back and demand that something be different than what has been proffered is, is not the proper
Right.
way to proceed. With a, with an amendment to a PUD, that's not how this works. If this was a conditional use permit,
We could, yeah, we can.
that's a completely different
Right.
application and process and different, different, um, state code
Right.
involved.
So with the PUD, we don't really have any, I mean, I, I, I'm trying to understand and make sure that all, all of us on council understand
Absolutely, sure.
that, you know, with a PUD, we pretty much are, um, doing a certain thing with that amendment and that's it.
That's correct. You are approving a reduced density to a specific unit type and number
Right.
as well as the, um, proffered minimum sizes and the additional proffers that related to the streetlights, the easements.
Right.
The covenants, uh, all of those that were listed that, uh, Mr. Martin presented.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gore?
Um, I have two questions. One is for, um, I was getting the gentleman's con-
I have two questions. One is for, I was getting the gentleman's contact information, so I miss who actually made the motion. What is the delay for? So I'm tracking.
I think, you know, we asked you, well, at least I know I asked you, if they could go back and look at sizes, to see if they could go and raise the, increase the sizes, and then also get some renderings on, you know, what the new style would look like. And that would be my preference.
So, I think we can, I can't speak to you, but the purpose of the request was for reduced sizing. That's why they started this whole process from the beginning, correct? So, Mr. Ward, you're fine. So the purpose of them asking us for the PUD was to be able to get an exemption to the sizes from this whole process, right?
There already is a PUD.
So, yeah, there's a PUD in place.
And then, so they're amending it.
And all they are asking at this point is to amend it, to reduce the density.
Right.
So that means a reduction in the unit numbers, total unit numbers and unit types. And in one particular case, I believe the townhouse size is being reduced from what currently exists. What's already in place? Does that make sense?
See, I thought we had approved, okay, just to clarify, because I thought we already did. When it came to us the first time, I thought we had approved everything then. And this was a change just for, I think you said the density, but now you're asking the time. I'm getting confused now. You said the townhouse size, too?
So their request to amend the PUD is a reduction in the density.
Right.
So it's the number of units.
Right.
Their proffers include the minimum unit size and all the other proffers that we talked about, the easements, the covenants, the lighting, the I know I'm missing a few of them. Yeah, the easements and the secondary access to the pump red. So what you are approving is their request to reduce the density.
And for H.H., we already talked, when you had the work session, we went over the homeowners associations. We talked about the various ones that were there.
Yes.
Your team agreed that you would consider consolidating and/or putting a point of contact with all of them, including pool access tennis courts.
I believe they even hosted a meeting since that time. They
Our team had a meeting two weeks ago on a Saturday with representatives from all five HOAs out there to try to get everybody back together and figure out what we could do to help. But just like the gentleman asked, you know, this would be, everything's an HOA. They would be a part of the HOA. They would pay dues that help with the pool and tennis court and upkeep and all of those things.
And what about the other questions you asked? Do you have any answers?
Are you asking for, is this a point of information?
Well, it's a discussion on the motion.
Okay.
Phase One, if we were approved tonight, I mean, we would be, the developed lots that are already out there, Phase One would start within sixty to ninety days. The traffic, the public works discuss, pool and tennis courts, they would have access to that. And single-family development is in line with the prices that are, of the houses that are getting built right now. So I think that was all the questions. The minimum, I know we keep getting stuck on the minimum square footage, but that is just the minimum. That's not everything, so there's a range, so they're not all small.
Thank you. Councilor Denton?
I just wonder, what are we trying to accomplish by putting it off?
Just like I said in the motion, I'd like them to go back and look about increasing the sizes, especially for the townhouses. I mean, I feel like, you know, if we're going and you're going to, you know, approve, you know, something to benefit them, you know, and honoring their request, I think that, you know, there's something that we can do, at least, you know, get from our end and have, you know, a little bit higher square footages on stuff. I mean, I don't see, you know, how that's not going to hurt anything to go back and look and see if that can be done. I mean, we asked for it last time, and I didn't see any major changes.
Okay, I guess my point is, they bought the land. They can develop it.
Sure they can.
And I think we have certainly expressed to you our concerns. They can listen to us if they don't have to. We hope they will, but I don't know that waiting another month is going to change their mind or make that much difference to them. So personally, I can't, I don't see what we would accomplish by putting off this vote.
Okay, roll call.
Councilor Gore?
And the motion is to delay?
To delay.
No.
Councilor Denton?
No.
Councilor Palom? Councilor Palom? Mayor Bennett?
Uh, no.
Councilor Randolph?
No.
Councilor Holloway? Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion fails, five to one.
Okay, moving on. Public hearing two.
No, no, no. We need to take action.
Would you like to call a motion?
Sure. I'd like Okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve the It's the wrong one, sorry. There it is.
It should be on your screen, Council Randolph.
It's not.
Oh, sorry.
I would like for, to make a motion that we approve the developer to, wait a minute. To amend, for council to amend the, allow the developer to amend the planned unit, the PUD at Anchor Point to reduce the unit density. Is that sufficient, Mr. Ward? Along with the suggested proffers?
As presented, maybe?
As presented. Yeah, because I know that they presented some new ones tonight. So as presented tonight by, from the Planning Commission and as presented tonight by H.H. Hunt. Is that good for you all?
Just as long as those documents that you did bring tonight and that we didn't have before are filed into our minutes. Okay, that way we can publicly
Yeah, so in other words, we need them in writing to our clerk, so she will have them for the full motion. Okay, is that good enough, Mayor? I think that's good enough, as long as we say.
It's getting late. Yes, good enough.
I'll second.
Roll call. Councilor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Palom? Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Randolph?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
No.
I didn't hear the motion.
Voice from beyond.
It says to allow the developer to amend the PUD to reduce the unit density as presented by the Planning Commission and H.H. Hunt. Is that correct?
Including the proffers presented by the Planning Commission and H.H. Hunt tonight.
Including the proffers presented by the Planning Commission and H.H. Hunt.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. So motion passes six to one.
Is it safe to move on to public hearing two?
All right, public hearing two.
Okay, Hopewell Public Schools Division FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget was approved by city council on June thirtieth, which included twelve point five million in local support. We are asking council to take action tonight. Staff recommends that city council approve the resolution providing the supplemental appropriation requested to amend FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget of Hopewell Public Schools of one point million, one point million dollars and eighty dollars. One million and eighty dollars.
One million eighty thousand seventy-five dollars. So moved.
Oh, wait, this is a public hearing.
Oh, I forgot.
It's late, it's late, it's late. Okay, have any questions? Anyone have any questions? For Dr. Manker. Okay, open the public hearing. I do not see anyone who has signed up for public hearing two. If there's anyone here this evening who would like to speak on this public hearing, please come forward. Nope. Public hearing is now closed. Is there action from a member of council?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the one million eighty thousand and seventy-five dollars to the Hopewell Public Schools FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Are there any comments, questions? Roll call.
Councilor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Palom?
Wait, can you hold on, please? I don't think she heard the motion.
Yeah, yeah.
And she has to declare something.
Yeah.
Has she declared anything yet?
Councilor Palom, have you declared anything yet?
I'll come in tomorrow and do it in twenty-four hours.
Okay. She's just aware of the motion.
Okay, so you're aware of the motion, correct?
Yeah, dude.
And she will file, she'll file tomorrow.
About one point something million.
One million eighty thousand seventy-five dollars.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Randolph?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway? Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero to amend the budget school.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing three, chief. How are you? Doing well?
So while the chief is approaching the podium, the staff is requesting fifteen cars from the offer funds. The chief will run down the cost of the cars, different items that he needs in order to fulfill his request. He has also presented to you guys a folder that indicates the condition of the cars, additional information that was requested throughout today, that he has left behind for you guys to review.
Excuse me. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, good evening. Come before you this evening because we are requesting permission to purchase fifteen vehicles. And I have a very short presentation I'd like to share this evening to kind of highlight the status of our current fleet. Want to let you know that right now, currently, the police department, we have seventy-nine vehicles in our fleet. And if you look at the list before you, that's three trailers. We have three animal service vehicles. The police recruit training vehicles, that's two cars we use in the police academy. You see the average year is fifteen and a half years old. We have a SWAT vehicle that's twenty-five years old. And then we have seventeen unmarked vehicles. The average age is just a little more than eight and a half years. We also have five spare unmarked vehicles that we currently have. My recommendation, if we could, would be to deadline those vehicles. Each of these vehicles, the average age is fifteen years old. These are vehicles we currently have in our fleet. Also, we have two C's vehicles, and then we have a wrecked vehicle that has been totaled. So technically, we have seventy-eight vehicles, once we subtract the totaled vehicle. The picture that I have before you, that is just to show you an image of one of the unmarked vehicles that we currently have. I told you, we have five unmarked vehicles. This is a two thousand seven Ford Taurus that we currently have. When we look at our marked police cars, that's what most of the citizens see on the road. We have forty marked police cars in our fleet. The years are listed. But of the forty marked cars that we have, I want to talk about twenty-eight of those cars that we have on the street right now. Two of those cars are more than fifteen years old, and you see the mileage listed. Hundred and thirty-eight thousand is the average. Then we have eleven cars that we operate every day that are ten years old, and the mileage is ninety-five thousand, with three of those cars in excess of a hundred thousand. And then we have fifteen cars on the road that are seven years old, and the average mileage is seventy-four thousand. Just want to paint a picture of what's on the road currently. I show the image because, again, I went out yesterday in preparation to speak with you tonight and just started taking photos of the cars that were parked outside of headquarters. And I just wanted to show the image of the cars that we currently have in our Hopewell police fleet. These are cars that are on the road today. Again, this photo was taken yesterday of a car that the officer's driving, where you can see the floorboard is coming apart. This is a two thousand thirteen Dodge Charger that was operated yesterday during day shift by Lieutenant Cheyenne Cassell. He was driving this vehicle. And when I opened the door, the first thing I noticed was a hole that's in the floorboard of the vehicle. And you can also see where the side paneling is coming apart. And our budget, we have budgeted a hundred and twelve thousand for maintenance each year. And when I went back and looked at the last three years, we've averaged just over a hundred and forty-eight thousand for FY twenty, a hundred and thirty-five thousand in maintenance for FY twenty-one, and just over a hundred thousand in FY twenty-two. As of yesterday, we have sixteen marked police vehicles that are currently in the shop. And if you ask me why the car is there, we have a variety of cars that have problems with the air conditioning not working. We have suspension issues. We have transmissions that have gone out in the shift. And just to tell you, I came in on a Monday to have one patrol officer share that over the course of the weekend, he had to swap vehicles three different times because the cars kept failing, either no air condition, either ran hot, and just other issues. So that was just over the course of one weekend, one officer having to keep switching vehicles to try to get something to finish his shift. The average number of vehicles that we have on the road each day, Monday through Friday here in Hopewell, we have eighteen marked vehicles on average, working a twenty-four hour period. We have thirteen unmarked vehicles that operate during that twenty-four hour period, Monday through Friday. And when we look at our weekends, on Saturday and Sunday, we still have the eighteen marked units that are working around the clock, but then we only have two unmarked vehicles, as we typically have detectives that are on call on the weekends. Yesterday, Officer Titus Young, he came into work a half hour early because he needed to jumpstart his vehicle. And we needed this vehicle on the road just to have enough vehicles to man the shift. This is vehicle number eleven. It's a two thousand seven Ford Crown Victoria that was operational yesterday, and it was on the road again today. Has a hundred and fifteen thousand miles. As I stated, he came in early to jumpstart the vehicle. But when I looked at the vehicle outside of headquarters yesterday, you can see on the driver's side, the rear quarter panel is rusted, and you can just see the damage. I stand before you tonight because I'm asking for fifteen vehicles, and I know money is tight, I do. But I also want to talk about the impact just briefly. We have a tough time retaining police officers here in Hopewell. Currently, I have six vacancies in the police department. I have three officers that are in processes with other agencies. One scheduled to go to Colonial Heights, one scheduled to go to Prince George, and I have another officer that's scheduled to go to Capitol Police. I don't want to lose these officers. But officers start to get discouraged when they open their door and they are sitting in a driver's seat that has a hole in it, or they have a floorboard that has, you can stick your finger through the hole. And I know there are needs throughout the city of Hopewell. When I showed you the slide that said we have forty marked vehicles in our fleet, and I highlighted the twenty-eight, I'm not asking for twenty-eight cars tonight. There are twenty-eight cars. If you look at the mileage and you look at the condition, I think I could make a strong argument that we need There are twenty-eight cars, if you look at the mileage and you look at the condition, I think I could make a strong argument that we need twenty-eight cars. But I scaled it back to fifteen, because we have sixteen cars that are well above a hundred thousand miles. And when we have cars that the air conditioning is failing, the suspension is failing, it is a safety issue. And again, we want to make sure that we can provide service to our community. Last thing I want to say in my presentation is this. In the short time that I've been here, we've established a goal in the police department, we call it the four Ps. And the four Ps is preservation of human life, protection of the vulnerable, procurement of top-tier talent, and promoting problem-solving partnerships. That's what our focus is. So when we talk about procuring top-tier talent, no one wants to come to Hopewell when they look at a fleet that's failing in the condition that it is. And if there is someone looking to come, a lot of times it's because they can't get hired somewhere else. That's not the talent that we're trying to recruit here. So again, I asked the council if you would just consider everything that I've shared with you tonight, and I'm asking for funding for fifteen police vehicles. And also, lastly, I will say, I don't want to ever have to ask you for fifteen cars again. I do believe that the path forward is to look at our budget, and if we could just increase it slightly to the point that we could purchase three or four cars on an annual basis, that would give us a rotation of cars, so we don't have cars that we have to purchase a large quantity at one time. I know this is a big ask. Chief Absol was here for three years. Stats show that three cars was purchased in three years when Chief Absol was here. Chief Cohane served for seven years as chief of police. There were a total of twelve cars that was purchased during the time that he was chief of police. So we look at the last ten years, there's not been a lot of vehicles that have been purchased in the police department. Thank you, and I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I have Counselor Gore, then Counselor Denton, and then Counselor Randolph.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for providing this presentation, I think it's really important, and I think it's important for the public to hear this, and then also staff, two points. Counselor was just made aware of this, um, the severity and knowledge of how many cars needed to be replaced in the budget cycle. And that was because it came up through staff. So, um, I don't want the public to think that we sat on having fifteen cars be in this bad of condition. And the reason why I say it's also important for staff to know is because I've been preaching for years. Counselor does not always know what staff requests. That is why I have advocated for us to get your, um, budget requests prior to the city manager and finance directors editing, um, and also their recommendations. So that way, we can know what staff is asking for, because we do not know, we get what's given to us. And I think that's really important for the directors to know, because we get hit all the time and blamed for what is not provided to them, when in truth, we don't always know that they've asked for it. So in this instance, this is a very clear, big example, in which we did not know that there was the ask for all these cars prior to the budget cycle. We did not know the severity of the vehicles that need to be addressed, and why they need to be addressed. Definitely want to say, Mayor Bennett and Vice Mayor Parton, we talked on the phone several times when we were learning about this, and just was shocked about the conditions of the vehicles, um, and some other concerns raised. So I just want you and others to know, um, we can't approve what we don't know, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So when we talked about this in the budget cycle, I remember asking you, saying I was confused, because I know we had approved, um, cars recently with the prior chief and like two positions, I think it was dispatch and two other officers. So I think that might be your three cars from two thousand twenty-one, okay. So then also during that time, I remember saying, we have approved, in my memory, cars. So the question has been, what is going on with that? Now, this question you can't answer, but I would like to look at the capital improvement project. Can you do, um, this is probably going to take you some time, again, I'm not asking for, on all of council, but I'm requesting this. I would like to see, just when we look at the past capital improvement projects, when we have approved vehicles, and, and, um, when we talked about rotation, it was always my assumption, when vehicles are processed, whether it be sheriff, police, fire, that there was a rotation in place, which is why they were asking for us that number given to us. So for example, when councils ask for four cars, we assume, I can't say we, I've always assumed, that that was the rotation, and that you need a four at this time. So if we do two, it may not be ideal, but you only need a four, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Not in what appears to be, is what has happened, is we're just going to put one or two when you really need fifteen. And again, we don't know that gap. So I would like to, you know, look at that and then have your suggestion about the rotations, because I think if you like this, then clearly, um, fire is probably like this too in other departments. So I think we need to look at all of that, to see what the other vehicles are looking like. But I want to thank you for this and bring this to our attention, but I just want to be very clearly stated that not all of us were aware of this. And when we did find out, we asked for, do you put into the art of funds?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Denton.
Um, yes. I'd like to ask you a question. How about leasing, do you lease any of these cars?
Currently, ma'am, that's an excellent question. Currently, we do not lease, however, within the last thirty days, we have met with enterprise, uh, leasing, uh, just to explore, uh, the leasing program. That is something I'm very interested in, in the future. But in order to lease, it would come back to, when I say, if we were able to have an increase in our budget, so that we would have some money that we could lease, that would give the ability to build in a rotation. Now, I've not had a chance to speak with our interim city manager about this, because she's just come on board. Um, but we are exploring ways going forward, so we don't find ourselves in this situation where we're just not keeping up. But that is a great question.
Leasing can be a lot more reasonable than going out, because the cars come to you fully equipped.
That is, that is, that is correct. Right now, again, we're in a situation now, because we've not purchased cars in a very long time. I need cars, and however I can get them. I'm interested in the lease program, and I've talked with them, uh, but for right now, I need to get some cars in the police department.
Okay. I'm not saying you don't need these, but I'd like to ask the city manager, so, you know, do we have a list, I mean, I'm, we're hearing tonight from one department. And based on the information that was given to us in our packet, one point three million dollars for the fifteen cars and the computers, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a list from all the departments of their high priority? And I mean, I know we also have tonight three hundred thousand for a LED lights. But, uh, do we have a list of high priorities from each director in the city?
We do have a list, Ms. Denton, and, um, it's our intention to bring that list back to you on September thirteenth, so we can go through the list together in a work session, and start to prioritize, um, how to spend the opera funds, and to have a discussion. This has been a priority, um, that we all felt that it was something that needed to be addressed, um, sooner than later.
Okay, then I'm going to say one more thing. I see we still have our chief of police, uh, chief of, the fire chief here, uh, Chief Rupert. I heard, um, that last week, I, this is Tuesday, last week, that we, you were turned down for your ladder truck, am I correct? Because we had asked the, um, our congressional leaders. Well, it, it does, it all comes together, and I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this, because.
We can't make a move right after the public hearing, after we open and close it.
You want, after the, oh.
Yeah, after we, we have this a public hearing, so we can't make a.
Okay, then I'll, because I just want him to tell you very quickly what this means to our city. And, um, do you mind waiting until we get to that point? I'm, I don't want to get the chief out of here, but I'm just trying to, to look at the whole city, not just the police, because they are a need, but you are a need. So let, let me go through the proper procedure, and I'll get right back to you, if you don't mind.
Okay, all right, um, me, Counselor Randolph, yes.
Appreciate it, chief, um, but correct me if I'm wrong, and you may not know, but I think that this request of fifteen cars actually came from the previous chief.
That is correct.
Yeah, because, um, I, I know we've had this discussion with counsel at least once that I can remember, where we talked about the need, uh, and Chief Absol did say there was a need for fifteen cars. We all kind of went, what? And, you know, about rolled back in our heads. So this has not been just your request, this has been at least a year or more requests.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Yes, sir.
Because when I came on as interim in December,
Yeah.
Uh, one of the first things Chief Absol told me was the condition of the fleet, and that he had been working with the city manager and council to get fifteen cars. So I've not upped that number.
Right.
At all. But again, we're in a situation where I'm just bringing the facts forward. I want to make sure you know.
Yep.
What we're dealing with.
Yeah, thank you. So I do, I, yeah. This is not, it isn't, it is a new, this was actually on the CARES Act, for, we had this request on the CARES Act. So this is not brand new.
Nope.
Uh, this is when we first talked about the CARES Act earlier last year. The money came through, that was on the list. So, you know, I have no opposition to this, um, getting the fifteen vehicles, because we've already voted for it to be done, okay? We've already voted that we needed fifteen cars. I'm looking at these vehicles, and of course, these are, it's, it is terrible. We can't pay police officers to not patrol if they have no vehicle to patrol. So we're just paying police officers to just, you know, not drive or hang out in the police department? I mean, honestly, in order for us to be successful, we have to give police officers the tools they need to be successful, and we have a high rate of crime that is increasing. I can tell you, looking at that red car, the unmarked car, if that car tried to stop me, I would buck it to the police department, because I would not trust it. I don't trust it. So you do have my support in this, this has been, uh, I have supported this since last year. This is not a new request, thank you. Um, Counselor Gore, and then Counselor Randolph.
All right, so I'm going to say this and go, am I trying to?
Thank you.
I, I prefer that too, so you can clarify something.
Vice Mayor Parton can go first.
Yeah, so, yeah, Chief Asful, you know, I think what I, I think everyone's confusing is that he requested vehicles in his budget.
Correct.
But to the extent of fifteen vehicles, and relaying the deplorable condition that they were actually in, and to actually, you know, even make, I mean, I actually witnessed it myself, but the fact that we have policemen and women in cars responding to a call, and the car breaks down, and they have to call somebody else to go and do that. That was never relayed to any of us.
Thank you.
And a discussion on, yes, some police vehicles, but I know definitively when he stood there, because this was a conversation that Counselor Palam and I had about, you know, the need for police vehicles, uh, then. And I know in, you know, one budget year, um, and I think this is actually, it might have been a budget year two years ago, or it might even been, uh, previously, that one of the reasons why I know Counselor Gore and I voted against the budget was because there was no legitimate capital plan. And, yeah, I mean, how do you sit there and have, uh, a city that you're trying to, one, keep safe, but two, grow in terms of infrastructure, you look at infrastructure holistically. So, eh, eh, to go and delay this decision, you know, I, I just, you know, find it a little ironic, you know, now we got tables turned on a, on a table delay decision, uh, for tonight. But you've got to start procuring these vehicles, and that takes time.
It does.
You've got to start getting equipment, that takes time, with the microchip shortage, that takes time. Converting, um, if, I'm sorry if I get the Hertz wrong, but to go from, what, a two-point-four to a five or some, whatever the conversion is, again, that takes time. And just like the LED lighting and the proposal that was given here, that's going to take, you know, one and a half years. And that's when we start getting close to the point where we've got to have this money exhausted. So we've got to start phasing some of this stuff in. And like Dr. Manker said, and I know that, you know, I've mentioned it many a times to council, and I know that we discussed it in our agenda meeting, we've just got to get the ball rolling and started on this stuff. I mean, we've had this money now for almost two years, and I think if we knew that it was in such, you know, deplorable condition, these things would have already been done and taken care of. But like Counselor Gore said, when we don't know what we don't know, you know, that, one, makes us look bad, but it makes the city look bad, because it makes it look like we don't have the money to actually go and, uh, replace our police vehicle fleet. And I just, I applaud you, just like, you know, I hope that the fire department's doing the same thing, working on a good, you know, replacement schedule for their vehicles and their fire trucks and all their equipment. Because that's the only way to, you know, properly sustain anything through a budgetary cycle. Um, so, I mean, I fully, you know, support this, and I hope that we can get the ball rolling starting tomorrow.
If I could speak, uh, Vice Mayor, to your point, um, one of the things that I'm doing in the police department, a lot of times, you know, people blame council, they will say, well, council doesn't care about us, or council, and, and what I have witnessed, I say, it takes two, there has to be a good line of communication. My job as the chief of police is to make sure you have facts. I understand you can't always say yes, you can't always agree, but my job is to make sure that the message is delivered by working with our city manager, and that you all have facts, so that when you do vote, you know what you're voting on, and you have correct information. So I thank you for that, and my job is to make sure that the officers, uh, that work, and civilians that work for the police department just know that they have a representative, and we have a good line of communication. So thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I have a point of information before I call in Counselor Gore, and then Counselor Denton.
No, me, after, right now. That's what you said, sorry.
Sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Gore, Counselor Gore, Counselor Randolph, and then Counselor Denton. My point of information.
Can I make a comment too? I didn't speak.
She goes before me.
Yes, she can go before, because everyone else had a turn.
Go ahead.
My only point of information is, I would like to see, I know that we sell cars in auctions, right? I don't know how much we get, however, there's a buyback program, whatever those programs are. If we can get whatever monies that we recoup, you recoup from those vehicles, which you sell, you sell parts, that they go back into the general fund.
Okay.
Okay, and that would pretty much assist us in, you know, balancing out these, uh, costs, right? And I have said that before, so, uh. Counselor Palam.
Go ahead, Counselor Palam.
That was a, a nice point, but when, when you get those monies back, it would be nice to know how much, how much the return was, to see how much you would, we would have offset the cost of the total fifteen cars. But I somewhat agree that it is urgent, but I, I do believe that we need a total strategic plan of everything so we can make a more, um, exact decision about the, the health of the entire city. And, uh, start on the fifteen cars, but I think the, uh, art money or the rescue money too, we need to remember was given during the time of COVID to, to assist citizens as well. This, this is a return that will, will benefit both the Department of Police is, as well as the citizens, because no one wants to call a police car that's going to break down in front of your house trying to provide the aid that you need as a citizen. But again, at that meeting, because all of our meetings always run over, we need precise time to make sure that we can look at all the department requests, but also the needs of the individual citizens that we're supposed to take care of as well, so. Not just a general comment, but I support the purchase. So, that's just a general comment, but I support the purchase of the vehicles with the rotation on in the future that this won't happen again, that you replace one, two, three every year, uh, so that we won't be in this, this won't happen again. Thank you.
Councilor Gore, Councilor Randolph and then Councilor Denton.
All right, so just for clarity, I'm gonna ask for CIP information. Um, you're gonna have to look at the history, but I guess the comparison is what was requested and what was provided to us, because that's the, that's the key that people need to see. But then also, I just wanna say thank you, Vice Mayor Parton, for clarifying that. Um, because I know some people wanna go on record saying that they knew. Again, I would inter, that I did not know about the fifteen cars. Uh, we talked about ARPA money before, so maybe it was submitted to the manager or somewhere else, but we never had a conversation about the conditions or the need to have fifteen cars. And I'm glad Councilor Pellam is on the phone because during this whole conversation with the budget, you may all remember, she kept saying, "Why can't we do four or five cars?" That was like her biggest point that she was raising. Did anyone here, it be said to council, "You have to have fi- fifteen cars because here's why." They're falling apart, they're breaking down, the condition. Did, did anyone hear that when we were talking about this in several work sessions? So there is also proof that this was never provided to us. So if others wanna go on record for it, they can, but I will not. Um, and then the other part I would say, in regards, um, to the staffy plan, I agree that we need to have a comprehensive picture. Dr. Manker, council has even given you requests that we wanted to see for ARPA funds because we've been asking for ARPA plans since last year to the manager and to have several work sessions regarding ARPA. We've only had one work, two, two, one in a possible, I would say. And when we had that meeting, it was only what staff had wanted and we kept saying, "What about the other ideas that we had?" And so when you have that September meeting, please make sure you incorporate all of council's requests. Um, I think we should probably resend them to that you had them directly. Um, because I know I estimated at least four items for council to consider. But just FYI, even for staff who is waiting for stuff to get approved, that was probably told by management, it will be addressed in ARPA. Council is not to hold up on that. We request ARPA meetings, um, repeatedly. Um, so I also wanna put that on the record as well. But thank you, Chief, for being transparent. Please continue to do so, so we can know what's actually going on, um, in the city so we can do something about it.
One point that just came to my attention, auction vehicles. I'm told here in the city in the past, uh, that they have been auctioned by the city and the funds have gone to the literary funds, if that makes sense.
Yep.
And going forward, we can speak with Mr. Newbill to see about what other options that could be available, but that information was just provided to me.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
What I will say is that, based on the discussions we're having now, it's not that I'm not for the cars or that I am for the cars. Of course we need them and, um, but I'm, I'm, in listening to what was said and knowing what has historically happened, we just said, "We don't know what we don't know." And so I am of the opinion that we need what has been asked for by several other counselors before me. We've gotta have a plan. It's up to us to push this timeframe for the plan, to get it together, understand what the needs are and put in priorities. And if the fifteen cars are the top priority, then that's what we'll be spending, uh, part of our ARPA funds on. But I know that, uh, I agree that we have to have some kind of plan. We don't wanna just jump at the next spending opportunity without being sure of what we're spending, why we're spending and whether there's another bigger need somewhere else that we're overlooking. So I have to a- agree, I think, with Mrs. Pellam, uh, Councilor Pellam, that we need a plan. I expect that the fifteen cars will of course be on that plan. But that Dr. Manker will bring us all together. Do, does council feel that we need to have potentially a special meeting outside of the September second meeting that we go ahead and set tonight for just looking at ARPA funds and the needs of the city so that we can make, ha- have a concentrated meeting just on that? So we can get it done?
I mean, I'm not opposed to a special meeting, but I still think that we've got to get something done tonight to get the ball rolling.
So staff is requesting approval for this today. However, if we'd like to have a special meeting to save these items for the special meeting, it's up to council.
Councilor Denton?
I thought you said in addition to.
Okay, and, and I'm fine, I'm fine with the special meeting or, and I'm, and if you know me and these counselors know me, I have always, always supported the police. I have always supported the firemen. I am for public safety a hundred percent. I think I mayor have discussed this many times and we know it. The only thing I'm trying to do tonight is what we, several of us are saying. We do have the ARPA money. And I did ask in my meeting with the, um, with Dr. Manker, how much was left? And based on the information I had received tonight, we have seven million eight hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. How, how? Now. It's in your ARPA.
Mm-hmm, the package you just gave us.
Yeah, while you were in close session.
Right.
That's a lot of money. And I certainly feel like it should be enough to get the fifteen cars.
I was about to say.
All I am saying is that I would like to postpone this until we get the list from every director in the city as to what their high priority needs are before we spend any of it. That's, it's just planning it and then we'll know where it should go for the whole city. And I think public safety will be at the top. But I think, I, I, not only did I hear, but, um, Mr. Rupert talk about, Chief Rupert talk about the ladder truck, which I heard about this week, last week. I also heard, if we have a big snow, we don't have trucks to get the snow off the roads. So every department has a need. All I am asking is that we postpone this vote tonight until Dr. Manker can get us, get with her directors, get us the list and then let's look at it. And let's say, this is what our city as a whole needs. We need the fifteen cars, I know that. We need the ladder truck, I know that. If we have a fire, you're talking about police? We have a fire in one of the high rises or around town? They don't have the means to save people. That's scary, they can die. I'm not trying to be blunt, but we have serious needs in our city. And all I am asking, all I'm asking is to postpone this vote tonight until we have the chance to look at the entire list and let's get with this ARPA money and we're not gonna, as I think, um, Councilor Pellam, Councilor Randolph, me, we don't wanna sit on this. We've got this money. We need, if, if there's a need, we need to, uh, to get these things. So that's, I don't want you to think I'm against it. I, I'm not.
Am I allowed to speak? Okay. No, if, I, I just wanna say respectfully, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I wanna make sure that I say this while I have the opportunity.
That's good.
Okay, I wanna say this because as I told you, I have a police officer that's in the process with Prince George, our neighbor in jurisdiction. I have a sergeant that's going to Colonial Heights and I have another officer that's going to Capitol Police. I'm already six short. I have cars that are sixteen that are in the shop and by the end of this meeting, I may walk out the door and have even more cars there at the shop. I will do the absolute best I can as the chief of police for Hopewell, but I will always give you the facts and at the end of the day, I, I understand you all have a job to do. But again, this is, is bigger than just the fifteen cars because again, we wa- we are called, when nine-one-one is called, we have to go. And Chief Rupert, I agree. You know, so I, I stand with him and I understand you all have a tough job and I'm not taking anything away from him, but the point is, we have cars that have holes in the floorboard that are on the road. We have cars that the oil light is coming on. We have cars that don't have air conditioning and police officers are working twelve-hour shifts.
I, I, I hear you and I saw your report you gave us tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just saying, do you absolutely know that that is the reason these officers are leaving?
It's a big part of it. It's a huge part of it.
Well.
Because they believe, they, the, the officers believe that city council does not support them. The officers believe that, the officers believe that they are called when it's nine-one-one.
We just gave you all a raise and we know support you want.
Council, Council Denton, Council Denton, let's call, let's.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, you don't need to apologize, but I'm saying, when you say postpone, postpone.
I said one month.
Yes, ma'am.
Open a public hearing.
Councilor Denton, excuse me, Councilor Denton is, has the floor. Councilor Denton, you wanna finish?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm, 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 I'm through, I'm just trying to say, before I spend any money, I've gotta know what, what the needs for this city is. If I'm gonna be, do my job as a counselor, I've got to know that. It's not that I'm trying to pick on you and I'm asking for, and if we want a special meeting, let's have a special meeting. We, as soon as Dr. Manker can give us that list from the directors, I'll call it. I'm not for prolonging it. I just want the information. That's all.
Thank you, Councilor Denton. At this time, I'm gonna open up a public hearing. I do have a Evelyn Gross.
Thank you.
Is anyone that signed up for this public hearing, I mean, did not get a chance to sign up for this public hearing tonight, would like to speak in the audience? Okay, public. Of course, of course, of course.
All right, um, I'm just, I'll, I'll, I can yell.
Let's see.
I mean, I understand, I'm, okay, so my name's Larry Scares, so I live in Ward Three. Um, I'm the biggest proponent of the police department, I guess. And I understand what everybody's saying, but, I mean, if he's got sixteen in the shop now, what do we, so, I mean, I know we're talking about fire and everything, but if we have a fire, fine, if we have a police call, I don't wanna, I mean, and I understand what she's saying, but if they call, if she calls nine-one-one, I want somebody to be able to respond to her house. And with him not having police officers, I mean, he's even agreed to, the chief's off, off the record has agreed to give up his car because he doesn't have cars. And there are officers that are like, saying they're tired of running, tired of working in this hot environment. So I hope y'all will do something like, at least, so.
Thank you, I have, um, I'm gonna have to close the public hearing. All right, public hearing is now closed. Um, Vice Mayor Parton.
And then Councilor Gore.
Just said she'd like to speak.
Vice Mayor Parton is speaking now.
After Vice Mayor Parton, Councilor Pellam, okay?
I move that we appropriate a total of seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars to the general fund, uh, Fund Zero-One-One Outside Agencies to fund the Petersburg area regional tran- uh, tourism part and the Hopewell Prince George Chamber of Commerce and a total of one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to the capital fund, Fund Seven, excuse me, Zero-Seven-One for city LED streetlight upgrades, fifteen police vehicles and thirty-five police mobile computers as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded in by Councilor Holloway. I have Counselor.
Pellam.
Pellam, Counselor Gore, Counselor Denton and then Counselor Randolph.
Never mind, I'm not gonna speak. Thank you though.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilor Pellam.
Yes, okay, well, yeah, uh, I forget. I forget about these other two items that was in the package as well, but I didn't, uh, mean, I don't want, I didn't want to delay the purchase of the, the vehicles, even though I, uh, again, think we have to look overall, hopefully we, it will pan out this time, but, um, never mind, I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Gore. Uh, just wanna say for the record, there was comments from meeting, um, about the ladder truck. I just checked my email, the last message we received was on June third saying that the appropriations bill that we requested and council approved to support the ladder truck was being picked up by one of our delegates, um, our state representatives. So if something has changed since then, this is a classic example of how no one notified us. So here we are having advocacy about something and comparing it towards another request when we don't even know. So it appears that we don't support fire, the ladder truck, et cetera, but we even know that there was an issue with the request that we had supported till right now. Um, the other thing I would say is, um, that, the irony of it, and I'm not trying to start a fight, but some of us have been asking for more accountability for years when it comes to the needs of the departments, capital improvements, process procedures, et cetera, and it not, has not, we have not had the support to do so. And so now that we have opportunity to make a change, we don't need to keep delaying when we have this window to make some fast improvements that we have been sitting on for quite some time due to not having a majority willing to have people held accountable. So, or transparent information provides for us to do our jobs. So with that, I'll call for the vote.
Okay, well, Councilor the vote is on the floor.
Not to, not till we, you've already said.
We have our hands.
Call for the votes on the floor.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, what's, what is, what is?
There's a point of information.
Point of information, whatever.
And I'm gonna, I'm going to go ahead and let the attorney speak on this and answer your point of information.
Yes, ma'am. So generally, where there's a point of information, uh, the point of information comes in and then there's a call for the vote on the floor.
Okay, what is your point of information?
My point of information is that the, the mayor had already announced that Counselor Pellam would speak, Counselor Gore would speak, I would speak and then Counselor Randolph.
I related.
And in the midst of that, she calls for the vote.
I understand. In this situation, parliamentary procedure would require everyone who was given, who is named as giving an opportunity to speak to speak and then there would be a call for the vote.
I just want us to vote, so that we speak.
Do I?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. All right, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Oh, we should have let her do that.
Um, I would just like to make a subs- um, wait a minute, uh, we'll, we'll vote, I'll, we'll all vote, but, uh, I did tell Chief Rupert that I would like for him to ex- explain, do you mind?
Counselor.
Do you have need in the fire department?
Counsel, Counselor Denton, um, we have to speak to the motion that's on the floor.
Well, this is using the ARPA money, right?
But it's only for the specific.
It's only for specific items that is called.
So, so we're going to vote, let me just clarify.
Mm-hmm.
So you're asking for us to vote for, and I know we, at the last meeting, we approved the Petersburg, um, area. the Petersburg area regional tourism, the Hopewell and Prince George Chamber. We knew we had already approved that. But we're approving three hundred thousand for LED lights, the fifteen vehicles, for seven hundred seventy-four thousand five-twelve, and the computers for one hundred eighty-two, two-twenty-three, for a total of one point three-three, one million three hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, without finding out any needs from anybody, any other department in the city.
Point of order. We've already said multiple times that we're going to have a work session coming up here shortly about this.
I'm just clarifying. Without.
We said that we were going to have another work session on.
Okay, speak through the chair, you speak through the chair. Speak through the chair. Okay, what is your point of order?
Don't worry about it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that we're going to vote on this motion tonight that has been made without even getting a list from Dr. Manker on how we're going to spend the rest of this money. We run out, so be it. That's what we're doing, right?
No, is.
That's what you're voting on.
Oh, my gosh. Is this?
That's because she's finished, so let's go ahead.
Wait, Counselor Denton, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Roll call. Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
No.
Counselor Hallam. Mayor Bennett. Mayor Bennett.
Oh, yes, of course.
Sorry. Counselor Randolph.
Did we get polled?
Yeah, she voted.
Um, no.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes five to two. Okay, we have one more item on the agenda, our last item. Unless there's a motion to adjourn, but I haven't heard it yet.
I do want to go home. And I usually am not the one who says that, but.
It's really quick, you guys.
Okay. So go, all right.
Okay, staff is recommending to add a part-time position to the Finance Department and the Payroll Division. And the reason why is that we have one full-time payroll clerk. There's been instances where she had been out, or she had been sick, and payroll was hindered because of it. And it's very imperative that we have at least an additional person or a second person that can continue the functions in the event that the primary person is not there. In the past, we had CBIZ, who were the payroll vendors for, prior to Munis being implemented, and they did things such as direct depositing, printing payroll, garnishing checks, monthly reports, state government. We only have one person performing all of those duties right now. And so, it's a lot of work for one person, and we do this in-house. We do not outsource any of these functions. And so, staff is requesting on behalf of Finance Department, Mr. Terry is here, if you have any further questions.
Counselor Gore, and then Counselor Randolph.
So, there's not, I can't think of the word right now.
A backup.
Cross-training with their leadership, when a person is out that they can't step in to do the payroll?
They have some cross-training, but it's not their primary function. I think the budgeting analyst has been taking up some of that slack. But other than that, it's not her primary function. And yes, she has been trying to step in, but it's not her role. It's not in her job description.
Okay, I just, there needs to be clear cross-training, because, I mean, it's the Finance Department, and I understand it may not be her primary role, but I can't imagine they can't process payroll if one person isn't here. That doesn't make sense for an organization. So, with them having a finance director, assistant, I mean, and all the other staff, I know it's not a lot, but I would imagine the heads know how to process payroll and can step in and do that in the event that that person's on vacation. The other part is what my concerns with payroll, and I'm not going to support this tonight, because I want to learn more about the system. I've talked to you in the past regarding my concerns about how payroll is even, and leave is even tracked. And I know there's a new system that you were looking into. I want to get more information about that, because it may not even be a need. I mean, there might still be a need, but I want to understand how that works, because I have concerns about how all of that is being captured now, and how payroll is done, is antiquated.
Thank you, Counselor.
So you have the new system coming on board soon?
No, that is a new HR system.
So we still have to fix that part, with how leave and payroll is processed?
Payroll module was implemented in 2017. So I have not heard any issues with them having any problems with processing. It's just that it's a large workload for the one person, and that's why this request is here.
Okay, I'm just not going to do it today, because I need more questions, but I want to keep us longer. I'll just talk to you, Mr. Terry offline. Thank you.
Can I go now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Terry, would you step forward to answer a couple of questions, if you don't mind? Mr. Terry, you apparently only have one person that's processing payroll right now?
Yes.
Okay, and the previous commenter stated that there should be cross-training, which I agree with. You don't have anybody else that's cross-trained to be able to do this? Or is it, or how do you make sure that all your staff has backup?
Okay, so first of all, we're asking for a part-time.
Yes, sir.
We're not asking for a full FTE.
Right.
Second of all, we need to put this in perspective. The Munis payroll system was delayed when Munis was implemented, which was a fallacy. The CBIZ company did all of the things that we outsourced. When we brought that Munis system in, when we put Munis in, payroll in, the assumption is you put in a new system, and everything goes kapooof. It's good, and that's not the case. What we're talking about here is, yes, we do have cross-training. That's a part of what we do, it's a few of us. But there's an intensity when payroll happens every week, every two weeks. We have to do reporting, we have to do quality reporting, we have to make sure things are done properly. And this particular issue about the HR module, that doesn't have anything to do with payroll. What we're saying right now is, for the first time, I have held back. When I got here, I knew right away that we needed to have a full FTE, two people. But when my payroll person had COVID, I have all of the employees in this city that I got to consider. So we're talking about getting a part-time person in, to have that individual to start doing some of the processing, some of the other things that we're doing. And yes, right now, we do have one individual, because we don't have six individuals or seven individuals deep in our department. We do have one individual that can do payroll, so we have cross-trained. What we're trying to do now is even out the load and making sure that we're not at risk. You talk about risk assessment, this is a risk. And so that's why we thought we better go ahead on and bring it up now, instead of having it happen again, because this just happened, where my payroll specialist was actually out in two weeks, back in June, COVID. And so, we just got to try to eliminate this. So again, this is one part-time position, it's not a full FTE.
So this will be a permanent part-time, full-time, a part, full-time, part-time person?
Yes.
Okay.
And in addition to that, which none of y'all have a concept of, is that Munis is constantly challenging us with changes. So we have to go through within a quarter of getting trained and with a switch-over with Munis. And your IT director that can tell you that, because we're doing that. So we have one individual or two individuals in which we are making sure that we keep up with the Munis training and the new changes or whatever we have to do within Munis. And so, that's my biggest challenge right here, is we need a part-time person that we can have them focus on some functional things in the department, and then we can keep moving. And I just definitely do not want to not make a payroll.
And lastly, do you have the funds in your current budget?
Yes, ma'am.
To hire this person?
Yeah.
So it would not be an additional funding?
No, we looked at, we looked at all of that.
So it's coming from his existing?
Yes, then I'm fine, yeah.
Counselor Hallam wanted to speak.
Existing?
Yeah. Was this, was this, was this position present to us during the regular budget cycle as well, Mr. Terry?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. We have, we have not, in finance, we have not come forward. When I got here, there was a bunch of positions held with Caffer, and I, I think I talked to you a couple of times, and a couple other people. We haven't come forward with any rounds of position. When we go through this risk assessment, and we look at a couple other things, and within the order to, we probably will come back in the next budget cycle. This is strictly, like the chief was back there, it's just things I know that we are exposed to right now, and I want to close the gap today.
I'm sorry, I missed.
What I was saying, because I'm along with, it seemed like what Counselor Randolph was saying is that you don't hire a part-time position because someone's sick for two weeks, because what would they be doing for the other fifty weeks in the year?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to me that there must be something else you have to use to justify a part-time person, especially if they're going to get benefits as well.
Yes, ma'am. Let me slow down.
The main payroll person.
Yes, ma'am.
That means, will she be able to take more breaks now, or because the part-time person is doing some of her work?
Yeah, no, ma'am.
I mean, and then, wait, one other question. Is payroll clerks in the police department and wastewater still? Do they do their own payroll?
Yes, they do.
Huh?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so I mean, those two persons, they don't interchange and help each other out? How many other payroll specialists are in these other departments that we have?
Okay, Ms. Hallam, let me back up, because I did not understand your question. We have one payroll specialist in the entire city. Okay, that person processes checks and W-tos and things of that nature. And then, weekly and bi-weekly things, like reports that have to go to the state. In each department, there are people who help try to gather time and make sure that people are paid for the time that they have worked. And they do that processing in their departments. And then they pass that over to the payroll specialist, who then goes through her processes. But it takes, it takes an entire week for her to, just to get through the payroll, because she's just one person. And for example, payroll ends on Tuesday, but we're all required to submit payroll on the Friday or the Monday before, in which we have to guess whether we're going to be at work on Tuesday or not. So, so we're not, we're having to forecast whether we're going to be here, because she has to start her processes so early in the week to give us enough time for checks to hit the bank by Friday. So that's, that is also another reason and a purpose for this position. You know, at the last minute, let's just say someone decide they're not coming in on Tuesday, well, we've already paid them for Tuesday. We have to subtract and deduct those times in the next pay period, because one person has to plan out the entire week in order to have those checks processed in the bank and impending in our account by Wednesday, so we can be paid on Thursday. So that's with the lack of having only, you know, one person performing those duties.
And in your back, I just want to make sure, we put in there, it's the second page, what this individual, because what Ms. Hallam was saying, I apologize, Ms. Hallam, I was a little bit passionate. But the individual would not be a two-week deal. This is, we need that part-time person to do data entry, work on employee deductions. In other words, this person will be doing constantly for the entire year functions now that we just have to cluster. And when we talk about cross-training, that's when I do have to have my budget analyst to help out my payroll specialist to make payroll, which I'm assuming that at this moment, this is the first time, you might know that, but that's what we've been doing. That's how come people have been getting paid, because we've been having to plug the gap with other staff, and other things get lacking. So, when my payroll specialist totally went down, that was it. I had to come forward, and so I've come forward.
Thank you, Counselor Denton and Counselor Gore.
Mr. Terry, then a part-time person would be sufficient?
Yes, ma'am, for right now, yes.
Okay.
We want to get them trained.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request to create a.
I had called on Counselor Gore after I called on you.
I'm not, I'm just making a motion.
I was just making a motion.
Yeah, I'm just.
She didn't hear. I didn't hear.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request to create a part-time assistant payroll specialist position for the city of Hopewell.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Dr. Manker.
I'm sorry, Counselor Gore, and then Vice Mayor Parton.
Just for clarity, I'm not talking about the HR module. I'm talking about the payroll mod, payroll system, so I'll just, I'll talk to you about that. But just for a point of clarity, I thought when we did the budget exercises, we asked for everyone to supply up to ten percent that being cut. What's confusing me is, where did this twenty-six thousand dollars come from in your budget when it wasn't offered to be reduced when we did the budget? Where do you have this at in your budget?
We're going to decide, we decided amongst ourselves, we're just not going to purchase certain things, just not going to do certain things.
She's going to take from somewhere else, so it's not like you have, you're going to take from somewhere else to do this.
Yes, because it's, this is, this right now is a risk.
Okay, well, if you're going to operate within your own budget, then I can support it. If I still have questions regarding payroll that I've asked before, maybe that has, maybe that has reached you. So I'll type those up, send them to Dr. Manker and you to seek clarity. My thing was just not trying to add more to the budget after what we did. So if it's coming from your budget, that's your discretion to use what you.
I would not come before you looking for money. We looked within, and we made the decision, we need to get this done. So we just will do without.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Dr. Manker, for the motion, do we need to make sure that we include a dollar amount for this?
Yes, I would.
Counselor Denton, would you be amenable to making it twenty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars?
Where did you pull that figure?
Right here.
On the back sheet.
On the back sheet, yes.
Yes. I didn't look at it, but it's late. Yes, sir.
Call for that vote.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Gore.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Hallam.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Counselor.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Roll call. Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Hallam. Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph. Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Oh god.
I do not know.
Not me.
I got dogs, they're my kids, but you know what? They will sleep with me.
They're already up and yelling and running around. I'm like. Because mine, I don't have that anymore.
Six thirty is the difference.
I just didn't want to think y'all's surprise.
The lawyer of all. I'm trying to knock, I'm trying to knock you out.
Well, you don't want to take none of that?